The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome back. We are back from recess and we are moving into, as soon as I get up there. The program review with Mrs. Lauterbach.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for having me. My name's Angie Lauterbach. I'm the special education coordinator that works with Delano. I've met most of you a couple times, so I'm just here to do my annual report and we'll go through a couple updates. So I've been with Masico and Delano since 2019 and 2020. Some of you are familiar with our executive director, who's also the director of special education for Delano, Melissa Hanson. She started in 2021 and 2022 school year. So this is an overview of our child count, so the percentage of students in our district that are receiving special education services. We want those numbers to be lower because it's meeting, shows that we're meeting the needs of many students in the least restrictive environment possible. You can see the comparison to some of our seven-member districts. We are lower, which is good, but each year we're trending up. So our goal is to keep working on providing support in general education to the greatest extent possible. And then when our students do need special education services, when they do need special education services, making sure we have the support to provide that. So right now, you can see this year about 16.2% of our population receives special ed services. This includes our speech-only students as well, and it also includes our first through five students, so that inflates the number a little bit. You're looking at just K-12 or closer to about 14%. Can you go to the next slide, please?
A little closer to the mic. I know that's difficult. You can pivot the...
Okay. So the other thing to note is whether we're losing students to other districts because that might be a note to me that we need to improve programming in certain areas. So as you can see, the number of students that we have who are residents of Delano receiving special education services, the majority of them come to Delano for services. We also have students from surrounding districts that open and roll in Delano, and so it's actually about even this year. Usually, we're up a few more students than we are for resident students. Next slide, please. So when I came last March and I talked a little bit about our courtyard project, you can see on the left, that's the lovely courtyard before we did any work to it, just kind of a pit of rocks. And then we had a lot of people through, from the community and the school, both special education staff and general education staff, general and administrators that came together to do this project. It was really fun because a lot of our work-experienced students got to help with laying the drain tile, pricing out the materials, doing the plans for the courtyard. You can see the middle is kind of our finished product, and I say finished because we're doing extra phases. The picture on the right shows a zoomed-in version of the sensory ladder we have, so it's a bunch of different textures. And so some of our students with autism or different sensory needs can sit out in this courtyard and take a break to help get regulated. What you can't see in the picture is we also have a swing off in one corner, and we have a station with different sensory music activities on the left, and then there's some raised garden beds that hopefully our students will be able to use in some functional gardening activities, and then just a space for kids to take breaks. So, next slide, please. We are hoping that this spring, we can finish up the second phase of that project, which would hopefully allow for some more common space for classes to use when the weather permits. And all of the supplies were through a grant that we received, and so we're trying to utilize students as much as possible, and then collaborating with National Honor Society. The football team were big participants. Mr. Voight helped a lot, and we just got a lot of it done in one day. So we're not sure this second phase, if we're going to do a work party again, but we'll let you all know the date and maybe if people want to come out and do some manual labor to help the school. So, next phase, or next slide. Another cool thing we did with some of the grant funds is we took some of our high school students to Saint Cloud State. We did a campus tour and had them meet with disability services to learn how they can access college education even though they have a disability. So we talked about 504 plans and IEPs, and then they were able to attend a Beyond the Label presentation, which is college students with disabilities who are successfully accessing services at schools, or at college. So that was great. And then their favorite thing was Garvey, which is the lunch hall. And we had to, we had a few kids say, there's no more ice cream because you're riding on a bus back with me, and I just don't want to deal with that. This year, we are hoping to do a technical school trip. So we did a four-year school trip last year. We're hoping to do maybe Henepin Tech or NOKA this year, and then we're also scheduling some interview practice for some of our students. And then just a couple other highlights. The district as a whole is doing a lot with our multi-tiered system of supports. I really appreciate the work that's being done between special ed and general ed because that's what helps our students receive support in general education to the greatest extent possible. So I'm part of the district team, as are a lot of the special education teachers. We also are doing some student support teamwork with our private schools too, because we also provide special education services for their students. And then we're undergoing a bit of curriculum collaboration with Gen Ed too. That is a picture. That's okay.
All right.
No problem. Then, we are also looking at doing a sensory path in the community ed building, which is a space for our little ones to get their energy out on the way to their other activities. So we have some stickers and fun things that we're going to be putting down. That's a lot less labor-intensive, so I might be able to get more kids on board for helping me do that than the drain tile and the gravel hauling. And then the last thing is just that we're working on our new special education teacher cohort training. As we have new staff that come in, there's a, the special ed job is just a huge job. And so we're working as a cooperative to try and make sure they have the support needed. Any questions? Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Have you had, or what are you seeing in terms of trends around initial evals pre-K through 12? Is that on the rise as well?
There has been a slight uptick in initial evaluations across the cooperative, a lot of times in some of our younger grades. We haven't seen a huge trend as far as specific disabilities that we've seen more concerns with, but there is a little bit of an uptick. Could be because of the time during COVID when things were a little bit delayed, and we're hoping it'll kind of even back out. I'm also really hopeful that our MTSS work will help those referrals come down, because hopefully we'll be meeting students where they need to be in Tier One and Tier Two. Any other questions?
Thank you, Angie, for your hard work.
Thank you.
All right. Up next is the consent agenda. That covers all the financial affairs, the board minutes, and all of the inner workings of the running of the district. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Motion by Amy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion? All right. All those, oh, we're going to go to a roll call vote.
No.
No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up is the resolution for the acceptance of gifts.
Whereas Target, $22.33 for Delano Elementary, Blackbaud, $12 for Delano Elementary, DIS Pi, $800 for fifth grade Biz Town busing, $700 for fifth grade Saints busing, $250 for sixth grade Valley Fair, and $350 for Give Back Week, Friends for a Cause, $1,500 for Compass, Dorn Family, $1,100 for Dorn Scholarships, Dairy Queen, $338.80 for Families in Need scholarships, and the following for Orange Crush Robotics Team, number 3026, $250 from Delano Light Up the Night, $3,000 from the Loretto Lions Club, $250 from Core Trust Bank, $100 from Steve Rogers, $3,500 from Delano Lions, and $250 from Bauer Design Build have all generously offered to donate to the Delano Public School District.
All right. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution for the acceptance of gifts?
So moved.
Motion by Jim. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Ryan. Any further discussion? All right. Move to a roll call vote. Councilmember Schauist.
Yep. All right.
Councilmember Roser.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Black.
Aye.
Councilmember Deppa.
Aye.
Councilmember Gurkey.
Aye.
And Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Motion passes. Up next is Personnel Matters. It's on the screen. I would like to take the time to call out the retirements of Jerry Schultz, who has served this district as a teacher for the past 39 years, and Sidie Salchow, who has served our district as an administrative assistant for the past 22 years. The board and the district would like to thank both of them for their many years of service to our students and community and wish them the best in their retirement. Do I have a motion to accept the Personnel Matters?
So moved.
Motion by Sue. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Amy. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Next up, Public Comment. School patrons are given the opportunity to address the school board regarding items that are not on the agenda. All patrons will be asked to state their name and address for the record. While the board appreciates feedback from the public in this forum, board members will not comment on or discuss topics brought up by the speakers at this time. In accordance with Delano Schools Policy 206, the school board retains the discretion to limit discussion to a reasonable period of time as determined by the school board. If a group or organization wishes to address the school board on a topic, the school board reserves the right to require the designation of one or more representatives or spokesperson to speak on behalf of the group or organization. At this time, we are going to open it up to public comment. Mr. Shane's going to go first, and after that, I would suggest that we allow children to go first and then move forward.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name's Matt Shane. I serve as the superintendent. I live at 322 Second Street Southwest here in Delano. Before we begin the public comment portion of tonight's meeting, I would like to provide some context regarding a situation school administrators are facing. Through social media, it was brought to our attention that there was a book that was deemed objectionable in our school library. Upon hearing this information, I pulled the book from the shelf to review the content. Removing the publication gave the administration and staff time to read the book in its entirety to better understand the concerns and discuss if further action was necessary. At that time, neither myself or the high school administration had been contacted directly about the concern. We were learning about these concerns through social media. It is important to note that the first step in a process for filing any complaint with the school is to contact the staff person directly involved in the issue or the school principal to discuss the issue. We have always been available and willing to discuss any concerns brought directly to our attention through in-person meetings, a phone call, or email. Since then, the concerns were raised to be an online publication, and both the high school principal and I have received emails questioning the validity of the information and people expressing their concerns. I believe board members have received some communication as well. We have responded to all the inquiries, or we are in the process of responding to them. The district does not have a process for people to challenge the use or existence of resources in our libraries or used in classrooms. We hopefully, by the end of this evening, have that process in place. Staff has researched policies from other educational institutions, consulted with the district's attorney, reread federal and state laws, Supreme Court decisions, and other judicial decisions regarding the First Amendment to create a procedure and a policy for reconsidering resources and materials.
Mr. Shane, can we stop you for a minute?
They can't. They hear.
The, not, in here, the at-home viewers cannot hear you.
And I think in the back too. I'm seeing people trying not to hear.
Is there a way to talk with whoever's in the technology room mat to see if we have an issue that they're not able to hear the set of messages that is not going through?
Better now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay.
It sounds like the microphone's working now.
You want me to start over?
No.
Okay, okay. Who was it? Was that Joe said I had to start over?
Oh, it was so him.
The district does not have, as stated, as a process we do now. The staff has researched policies from other educational institutions, consulted with the district's attorney, reread federal and state laws, Supreme Court decisions, and other judicial decisions regarding the First Amendment to create a procedure and policy for reconsidering resources and materials. During this evening's work session, you reviewed the procedures to reconsider resource materials. Later tonight, I'm asking the board to approve those guidelines for reconsideration of resource materials. We are confident that the reconsideration and resources, materials policy before you tonight supports our guiding principles and philosophy, is relevant to our educational system, and is equitable for all students. The policy supports an environment where students, parents, or guardians of students currently attending a Delano Public School, current employees of the school district, or people who live within the school district to file a formal reconsideration of materials request. If the policy is adopted by the board, there will be a committee consisting of parents, teachers, staff, administrators, board members, and students to review every reconsideration of materials. Members of the board, we have approximately 1,200 students in our high school and more than 8,700 resources in our high school library. The resources in the high school library are dependent on the goals and objectives of the district. We have a wide range of reading abilities, individual interests, unique life experiences in our district. We aim to have books in our libraries that adequately serve the diverse interests, needs, reading levels, and life experiences of all our students. The selection of resources in our library is based on the needs, the demand on book reviews recommended by the School Library Journal. The School Library Journal is a premier publication for school libraries and information specialists who work with children and teens. They evaluate a broad range of resources from books and digital content to databases, and about 6,000-plus reviews are published annually. Every month, the School Library Journal publishes lists of resources appropriate for school libraries. The resources are catalogued by many different categories, grade levels, interests, themes, or reading levels. Each book on the list has a review and a verdict. Our Media Center specialists review those, read the reviews of the books and resources that are relevant to the population they serve. Based on the review, the demand, and the relevance to our students, the Media Center specialist determines if the book should be in the library. This is a standard practice in many public school libraries. A school library is an integral component of a student's education. Public, Delano Public School libraries are learning environments that provide access to new knowledge, skills, and dispositions for student success. We remain committed to upholding our tradition of educational excellence and through housing a comprehensive collection of library resources that serve all students. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. If there's anybody else for public comment, again, I'm going to suggest that we allow children to go first. If no children come forward, then we can move on to adults. I believe there are some students in the back, though, that would like that opportunity.
Go ahead, Claire.
Go ahead.
Clara, go on.
Hi, everybody. I'm Clara. Do you want me to say my address in the microphone? Okay. I live at 109 Clover Lane. I'm here as a student because I think we are the ones who are being affected by this issue the most, because this is our library that we're going to. And I have, I represent a group of students at the high school, and I am their spokesperson today to talk about this issue as they, they're, all four of those books they have read. But first, I'd like to say I'm a very avid reader, as I'm sure any teacher here could vouch for me when I say that. And in the seventh grade, I read the, I wanted to read The Exorcist. And so I picked it up from the school library, and I brought it home, and my mom looks at it, and she goes, nope. And I return it to the library. I do not read it, but I do not stop other kids from reading it. And I think that's a very important factor in a public school. So now, reading the statement from my students that I am representing. "I'm a student at Delano High School and a spokesperson for the group tonight. We are here tonight to oppose the banning of the books in question and the banning of books in general within a public school. The 1982 Supreme Court case of Island Tree School District versus PICO states that according to the First Amendment rights, including the implication of the right to read, cannot be restricted by the federal government, in this case, a public school. This decision states that public schools cannot ban books due to specific groups' opinions. The books currently in question are being labeled as pornography, and we are here to dissuade you of that opinion. The students in the group I am speaking for have read the books in question, and while admitting that these books do have sexual content, they have a high educational value." One student in the group stated that All Boys Aren't Blue, one of the books in question, made them feel recognized in a school district that is often hard to be recognized in. Another said that the book Flamer left them very connected to the characters and experiences. The books in question, Flamer, Crank, All Boys Aren't Blue, and Push, are all books that hold more positive factors than negative, and that argument can be made for almost every book in a school library, as every different opinion should not lead to a question of banning a book. The students of this group will undoubtedly be in supporting keeping these books in the library and continuing to keep books in the library. Thank you."
Thank you, Claire. Next.
Hi, my name is Oliver Berg. I live on 6703 County Line Road, Delano, Minnesota, and I'm here today to thank this council for funding the History Day. It helped me a lot because I could learn different books from resources. Last week, I got to do this regional competition, and it was really fun. I'm doing a performance with my partner Bobby Schleif. It was very fun. We got to, 17 of our teams made it to regionals, 13 of them passed. And thank you.
I'm Alexis Zenz. I live on 520 Ironwood Drive, and I'd like to say that the, as a kind of History Day, so education at Delano has been like very good, and I think a big part of that is reading, in that I think if we ban books, that's going to limit a lot of the, like, education we can get, and like, yeah, we shouldn't ban books and stuff. Thank you.
All right. Any other kids or anyone else? We can just line up and go through public comment in the order that you guys walk up.
Hi, my name is Teresa Jacobs. I live at 135 Crestview Lane in Loretto, and I am the public, Delano Public Library Librarian. And so my job as a librarian, following the American Library Association Bill of Rights, is to show up at events like this and say, there is a freedom to read based on the First Amendment. And as a librarian, I support that. It does include a person's right to use a library should not be denied or abridged because of origin, age, background, or views. Age is included in there. So it's something to think about as we move forward. I love the community. I love our schools. I'm supportive of the resources we have at our public library, but my job today is to come forward and remind the board that there is freedom to read, and that includes our children. So I'd like to pass out the American Library Association Freedom to Read, and then just the top 10 Most Challenged Books of 2021, just so you can read and be aware of what those books might be. So let me hand those out. So as a professional librarian, this is part of my job, to be able to come out and say, let's think about what are the rights of our children to read the books they need. As a mom in the Delano community, I'm going to take my librarian hat off and say that it is perfectly okay for any parent to decide what their child can read, but not what my child can read. And there is something to be said about the word sexuality. Let's just think about that word for a minute. I did some research, and the government website survey teenagers. By ninth grade, 20% of teenagers have engaged in sexual activity. By ninth grade, 20%. Maybe not your child, maybe not mine, but they are engaging in these behaviors. By the time they are seniors in the high school, more than two-thirds of children across the United States have had sexual intercourse. So I would just bring some of these facts as you're talking about literature, talking about what children are exposed to, talking about hormones, and the whole idea of a sexual being becoming and having the literature that matches what they're going through. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amber Becker. I live at 581 14th Street, Delano. So I'm just going to read, otherwise I'll go off on tangents. So I haven't read any of the texts in question, and I don't know the full scope, although I've heard, thank you, Mr. Shane, for kind of summarizing where you're at so far and what has gone on. So, like everyone here, I love my kid and I want to protect them and see them thrive. I'm concerned, though, about the slippery slope that is removing books from our school library. Just because a book is difficult or offensive to someone or even a whole huge group of people does not mean it should not, it should be removed for everyone. That's censorship. It may be that some of these things should be removed. They may be inappropriate, or maybe, you know, there can be a system where it's like ninth through 12. From what I understand, parents can restrict specific books if they so choose for their kids, and that seems reasonable to me. I know it doesn't remove their access to them at the school, but frankly, neither will removing them from the library. As another friend who couldn't attend tonight said, when she hears the banned book, she goes out and finds that banned book and reads it. So, and then when I think of some of the banned or controversial books I've read over the years, and I have a BA in English Lit, so I've read quite a few, they are generally speaking some of the most memorable, eye, mind, and heart-opening books I've ever read. Sorry, I get, okay. Moving on. Catcher in the Rye is one of my favorite books I've ever read, and I don't swear a lot, and I've never seen a prostitute. To Kill a Mockingbird, I Know Why the Cage Bird Sings, if you haven't read them, you should. They're life-changing. And as I said at the start, I haven't read the books beyond the excerpts shown, but I did read some of the reviews. Push was one of the most difficult excerpts to read. But when I read the reviews that explained that that book is a very raw and frankly horrific story about rape and incest, that's also about hope and education. Reviews of Flamer, another book in question, included phrases like, I wish this book existed when I was young, and this book will save lives. I personally have never read, or sorry, I've personally never heard of someone reading a novel and becoming messed up, certain propaganda publications aside, but I have heard countless instances that a novel changed someone's life for the better. Opened their eyes, changed their mind, opened their heart, gave them courage and hope. Literature can educate and reach people in ways that other forms of curriculum simply cannot. And it worries me and saddens me that we might be taking any of these possibilities away from our kids. We need a variety of texts to broaden people's minds, challenge, enlighten, and this is absolutely core to what public education is. And I really hope that we are not making decisions based on excerpts and fear. Thank you.
Jake Torla, 6003 Fennig Ave, Southeast. I'm going to start out by handing out the complete list so far to the board chair and to the superintendent, and then also save the date with the book list on the back of it. And to save the date is a, we have a subject matter expert as a special presenter one month from today at the same place. one month from today at the same place.
Jake, I'm going to ask you to address the board, not the audience.
All right. I thought about which passage I should read today. There's countless numbers of absolute horrible passages to read. And I decided I'm going to read from a passage that's from our current LA 12 curriculum. Okay? This is, every student in LA 12 has to read this. "First he put his thing up against my hip and sort of wiggle it around. Then he grabbed hold my titties. Then he pushed his thing inside my pussy. When that hurt, I cried. He started to choke me, saying, 'You better shut up and get used to it.'" "One of the finest combat leaders I've ever known told me two things. One, courage begets courage, and weakness begets weakness. As you know, my name is Jake. I'm a husband, I'm the father of six beautiful, innocent children, and I'm advisor to the concerned community of 879. So far, we have reviewed approximately 45 books from our high school library. Here in this stack is 36 pervasively vulgar books. The inappropriate passages have been printed off totaling over 200 pages. 200 pages, more than 200. This is not one or two excerpts. It's more than 200 pages, top to bottom, approximately number 10 font. These 36 books with pervasively vulgar content contain the following: pedophilia, incest, rape, incestual rape, child rape, self-harm, suicidal ideations, sexual nudity, sexual acts, the murder of children and infants, and drug and alcohol abuse. One book specifically, the passage I read from, is required reading for all LA 12 students. The passage I read depicts a brutal rape of a minor, and that's on page 1. A depiction of a newly born baby being murdered on page 2. An extremely descriptive sexual acts on page 77s and 78s. I understand this book is part of the curriculum in many universities and around the country. In those curriculums, adults are reading them, not kids."
Jake, I'm going to ask you, what book are you referring to?
The Color Purple by Alice Walker. Sorry, I forgot to state that. That's The Color Purple by Alice Walker, current curriculum in LA 12, all students.
They're not required. They have an alternative.
And I ask you, did you ask for consent for all the students that are minors and have read this book? It seems like a pretty big deal.
I'm going to stop you for a minute and let Matt address what is actually...
The process of that, and it's done very carefully, is that with those seniors in that course, they facilitate a process. If anybody has, or any student goes home, talks to their parent, and does not want to read that book, an alternative book is offered. So it's not required.
I understand that. Did you get consent from every parent of every child?
Matt is not going to answer your question.
Right. I'm posing a blanket state, or blanket question to the board and to the administration. Did you get consent for those children in those classes? Many may be asking themselves why the media had to get involved. If you did, it's a great question. And the answer is, the sunlight of transparency is the best disinfectant. Ignoring and pushing it aside will not fix the problem. It only makes it grow. I want to be very clear. When I say here at CC879, we are not calling for any book bans. It is not our place nor our mission. Our mission is to restore dental public schools to a respectful, neutral, and transparent school where academic excellence is once again in the forefront of its purpose, not activism. And in this particular case, we apply transparency. Again, the decision of whether our children are exposed to this vulgar and pervasive material lies within the people sitting and standing before you, the community of District 879, not the activists in the DPS ranks. Now, my simple mind breaks down the leadership of Delano Public Schools in terms that I understand. Mr. Shane, you're the company commander. Mr. Voit, Ms. Thompson, Ms. Schultz, you are platoon leaders. And the teachers and staff are your ranks. If any of you four choose to be weak, the activism in your ranks gets bolder and grows stronger. When you choose to be strong and stand up for the innocence of our children, the activism fails. Courage begets courage. Weakness begets weakness. It is not by accident or by chance that these books are in our school libraries. It's by design. It's because of this activism that are present in our district. That activism was allowed by way of two possibilities. Either one, Mr. Shane, you and your administration...
Matt, you can not address by name anybody in the district.
Okay. Either one, the administration are activists and want this pervasively vulgar material to be exposed to our children, or number two, the administration are simply lacking the courage and intestinal fortitude to stand up to the activists and are therefore weak. Courage begets courage. Weakness begets weakness. Be morally courageous. It's for the innocence of our children. The activist teachers in your ranks are cancer, and the only thing that will put that cancer out of our schools is courage. Courage to do the morally right thing and preserve the innocence of our children. Courage begets courage. Weakness begets weakness. To the board, know your purpose. Know your rights. You keep yielding your power and duties to the Superintendent and his administration. This is weakness. Weakness begets weakness. Be courageous. After all, it's for the innocence of our children. To the parents here tonight, you and you alone are in charge of your households, of your families. That same great leader told me, when in charge, take charge. You know what's best for your children and your grandchildren. Take charge. Be courageous. We have allowed our school to get to a point because we chose not to be involved. This was weakness. Weakness begets weakness. We must shed our weaknesses. However, we're here now, and we have courage. Continue to be courageous. It is time now to take charge. Now is the time to stand up and speak your piece to the board and the administration. After all, it's for the innocence of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll remind those of you speaking that addressing specific members of staff by name or insulting them will not be tolerated. So as we go forward, you can refer to administration or positions, but we're not going to refer to individuals.
Gina Nie, 63, at 6 Brighton Avenue, Southeast. I just, we say that we don't know that books harm anybody, or I've never seen that books harm anybody. My daughter, my daughter came across a book, 13 years old, and she told me after she had read it, because how would she know before? The book did not say on the back what it was about, and there was a rape scene. The girl was drugged and raped. And she didn't know what that was. I didn't know at 13 that I was supposed to be talking to my innocent child about rape yet. I didn't have any idea that these books are in the schools. And my daughter was not ready to handle that. She was disturbed by it. So don't, for us to think, and that's ludicrous to think, that these kids can handle this kind of content. I saw the movie Precious, and I was disturbed because I couldn't get some of the lude scenes out of my mind. I'm an adult. I'm not saying that these stories don't need some outlet, but it's with the counselor. It is with God. It needs to be healed. But it is not for the horrific evil event to come into our minds and our imaginations and to not be able to get it out. You don't think that's harming a child? I don't even know what to say to that. It, books. Am I wrong? A book stimulates the imagination. I am brought into someone's evil and horrific event. I have to relive it with them. These kids are 12, 13, 14, 15 years old. It is related to suicide. How many counselors commit suicide because they're adults? And they are, they're actually trained to handle this stuff, but can't, because they can't get it out of their minds. But we're going to subject 13, 14, 15, 16-year-olds to it? Come on! This is now one of those things like, I don't know. And he wrote an excerpt. Should I read an excerpt out of Freedom of Speech? It was horrible. I cried when I read it. I was trying to tell my mom, and I couldn't even say the words out loud because they're horrible. And you're wondering why our kids' attitudes are... Because we're not protecting them, people. We are supposed to protect our children. There is age appropriateness. And we as a country used to care about that. You couldn't have certain things on, you know, until it was after midnight, till your new kids went to bed. What happened to that? Seriously, they're kids. They ought to be protected. And yeah, maybe there are kids that can handle a little bit more mature stuff, but we are supposed to protect the least of us. We're not supposed to go after the ones and have it out there because there's some that can handle it. We're supposed to be protecting the least of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily Crutchmer. I live at 134 Lupine Court here in Delano. I don't have a fancy speech prepared, so I'm just going to go through my... I'm just going to go through my bullet points here. Sorry, I'm a little taller than you. I first want to read a direct quote from the Supreme Court case that has been referred to a few times here tonight, the Island Tree School District versus Pico in 1982. A direct quote from Justice William Brennan states that "local school birds may not remove books from school library shelves simply because they dislike the ideas contained in those books." I think that is of utmost importance as we think of how our children are learning to view the world and how they're learning to navigate their community. We have to teach them critical thinking. We have to teach them to think for themselves. And by censoring what they can and cannot read on their own volition, we are not doing them any favors. When we tell them that they can't read a book or that they can't view certain content, my first guess is that they go directly to the internet where they're going to find something worse. I would much rather my child learn about a real-world experience from a book that someone who is qualified has chosen to put in the school library than to go directly to Google and find who knows what on the internet. I don't believe that hiding what makes you uncomfortable makes it go away or invalidates the real-world experiences that people are gaining from connecting with these books. Other people here tonight have stated that they've had peers that are connecting with books and that they wished they could read this book when they were a child. I think that speaks volumes. It's up to us to parent our kids and to monitor what they're reading, as someone else stated. I understand that there's a system at the library where you can flag a book and your child can't check it out if you are that concerned. I think that is a great avenue. That seems very reasonable to me. I think you should also be checking in with your kids when they get home, checking out what books they've got. I do that every day when my kid brings home a book or when my kid goes to the library and asks if he can check out a book. I'm always going to look it over. I'm always going to know what they're reading. Same can't be said for the internet, like my previous point. I also believe that removing books teaches our kids to be scared of the content. It teaches them that that's a bad thing, that's scary, and we don't want to broach that subject. And when they get into the real world, they're not going to have the knowledge. They're not going to have the connection. They're not going to have their own thoughts going about how to deal with that until they're an adult. I think there's value in learning at a vulnerable age. Yeah, the real world is scary. Bad things happen, and we have to learn how to deal with it. I don't think that's doing a disservice or not protecting our children. Our First Amendment rights are not checked at the schoolroom door. That has been made clear in the past. And I wonder, with this slippery slope of removing content, who decides where the line is for inappropriate content or pornography or adultery or rape or murder or all of those things? Because I can think of a few holy books that depict the same thing. And I do believe those should be available in schools. I think that's a very important part of America. I don't want those removed. But if we're going to say that all pornographic or all inappropriate content with murder, rape, incest, et cetera, is removed, I think we need to do a double check there as well. Library books are not required reading. I think, again, you should be monitoring your own child's reading. It's not required. I think that's all I have. So thank you so much for listening.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent, parents. Joe McDonald from 653 Mederaus Court. I've had two kids go through school. I've got a junior that's going through school now. And I came to share with you some thoughts. About four years ago, at the legislature, during the House Committee, House debate, there was a book that was brought on.
Joe McDonald, we're going to ask that you address the board, not the audience.
Oh, just like in the Capitol, you got to address the speaker. I can't look at my fellow members. Very well, Chairwoman. As I was saying, there was a book that was read on the House floor. It was a sexually explicit book. It made everybody uncomfortable. Republicans, Democrats, independents, and those who just didn't care. It really was raunchy and very sexually explicit. And I sat right behind the gentleman that read it, so it was quite embarrassing. I was on camera, turning red, because it was explicit, sexually explicit. And everybody was embarrassed, mostly, I would say. Anyway, I thought to myself, thank goodness it's not in Delano schools. This book particularly was in a couple of schools in Minnesota and other areas around the state of the nation. The book was so explicitly sexual in its literature and its drawings, its cartoons, and it was banned from certain prisons, most federal prisons in the United States. That's how bad it was. And I remember saying, boy, I don't think Delano will ever have such sexually explicit, raunchy, vulgar material and pictures. And I was thanking the Lord that we didn't. Well, here we are today. I've read the material today. I've read what's happened in some of these books. And I know each and every one of you here, I've known some since they were little boys, and I know you all personally. I know that each and every one of you would not ever read such a book to your children, ever. And it is very sexually explicit. I am pleased to hear that Mr. Shane, if I can use his name, that immediately removed the book in question, knowing that it was really inappropriate, because he knows the law. So in the state of Minnesota and other areas in our nation, we have decency laws. Thanks be to God. Because if we didn't have decency laws and just allowed anything to happen, that would not be good for our nation. So under Minnesota Statute 617.291, the law was passed much longer before I got there, way before I got there. And it says sexually explicit material and exhibitions' purpose and policy prohibited. And I'll just quickly, I won't be too long, I promise. And it says this in the state law. "It is in the best interest of the health and welfare and safety of the citizens of the state, Minnesota, and especially of minors within the state, that commercial dissemination and dissemination without monetary consideration in a place of public accommodation..." Lawyer talk, of course. "...of sexually explicit written pornographic, printed, sound, or published materials and of plays, dances, or other exhibitions presented before an audience that are deemed harmful to minors be restricted to persons over the age of 17 years or, if available to minors, under the age of 18 years. That the availability of the materials to be restricted to resources within established and recognized schools, churches, museums, medical clinics and physicians, hospitals, public libraries, and government-sponsored organizations." We have in our state of Minnesota decency laws that prohibit sexually explicit material. Period. That's the law. Now, again, I commend the board directors, the school board and their superintendent that pulled the books immediately. And I think it's wise that you have a committee that overlook these books, Mr. Shane. Because if we don't, then all books, like I think in Hopkins now, they're banning the To Kill a Mockingbird or Huckleberry Finn. We don't want just one or two rogue people deciding what is appropriate, not appropriate. Now personally, my own personal opinion, this kind of sexually explicit pornographic books, written and pictures, should be only one person's decision. I don't think you need a committee, but if that's the state we live in, we want a committee to decide what books are appropriate for our children and what are not appropriate. So I just will give my two cents that these books certainly, as I read them, and I won't repeat them, because it's really, I'd have to go to confession for sure, right afterwards, they are horrible. That gentleman read it, and it's not, it's not good. You all know that. We should not allow that kind of language, that kind of stories to be told in our school books. Period. Now, we should have books of being tolerant, accepting, loving, compassionate, tender to all peoples, no matter what race, creed, or color, or sexuality we are. And I think that the school board has been doing that. I hopefully, you've been concentrating on being tolerant and accepting, but there is a point where we just cannot allow this kind of material in our schools whatsoever. You all know that in your hearts. I'm sure you do. So, Mr. Shane, or I guess I can't, Ms. Deppa, I hope that the committee that you put forth, I'll be happy to volunteer, sees this explicitly, and I'm going to say it again... But again, I caution you, certainly the committee is necessary to make sure that good literature is not taken out, even if it's uncomfortable. But this kind of literature is more than uncomfortable. It's unacceptable and inappropriate.
Thank you, Representative.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Schrein. I live at 738 Rux Farm Road. 738 Rux Farm Road. I support the free exchange of ideas and the written word across all sectors of society and in our schools. It is my belief that authors need to be able to tell the stories, even those we disagree with. The recent spate of book banning centered on keeping difficult but necessary topics from schoolkids is a chilling example of censorship, racism, anti-Semitism, and bigotry. The banning of Art Spiegelman's Pulitzer Prize-winning graphic novel Mouse in Tennessee on the eve of International Holocaust Remembrance Day is nothing short of haunting. In Texas, apparent petition to have a biography of former First Lady Michelle Obama removed, not even for objectionable content, but because of the misguided notion that promoted reversed racism. Across the country, state legislatures have introduced bills that would grant the ability to ban books for objections over depictions of race, sexual orientation, and gender identity. None of this is good for our society. I condemn all attempts at censoring books, particularly these attempts to harm and silence marginalized voices and keep their stories out of the hands of those who could help prevent these stories from being repeated in our world. These attempts threaten our creative community and our society. As citizens, it is our job to speak out, to protect the written word and its access to those who need it most. Writer Judy Blume said, "I believe that censorship grows out of fear, and because fear is contagious, many parents are easily swayed. Book banning satisfies their need to feel in control of their children's lives. This fear is often disguised as moral outrage. They want to believe that if their children don't read about it, their children won't know about it, and if they don't know about it, it won't happen." These book banings are giving into fear. Reading about the ills of society won't cause these things to happen, quite the opposite. Only armed with knowledge can we prevent the worst from happening. And no one ever learned anything in a library about saving the world without having access to the right book to teach them. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicole Berg. I live at 6703 County Line Road, southeast in Delano, Minnesota. And I just wanted to talk for a couple seconds about two artifacts that I have here. I have an old-style telephone, and I have a book. This is the way that most of the people who are over eighteen got their information and learned, and the way that they communicated. That's the world that we grew up in, that's the world that we lived in, that's what we know. The kids that are talking, and the kids that have already talked today, they don't exist in the same world that we grew up in. It's different. Just a few weeks ago, in fact, artificial intelligence, all the artificial intelligence chatbots, which for those of you who don't know about them, are gonna be a completely revolutionary new thing for the kids that sit in this room and all of the chairs at the Delano Public School System. An AI chatbot can take any information that you get, and it can write a ten-page paper for you in mere seconds. And it can take a dialogue sample from you for four minutes. It can decide what your vocabulary level is, what your age level is, and the vernacular or the words that you would use in writing, and it'll create something in seconds. And you'll have amazing paper, and you can hand it into your teacher and say it was yours. And you know what? That teacher isn't gonna know whether it came from you or something from the internet, from an artificial intelligence chatbot, an algorithm. They live in a whole different world. So to say that if we take a book and we, we say, you know what, you can't read this, and also, I'm gonna use my mom eyes from the back of my head in the galley that I can't refer to, if you're a parent, raise your hand. Now, keep it up if you're a parent that has a kid that always listens to you. Amazing, right? So this is their world. This is their new thing. They have this, they have technology, they have computers. This is what they rely on for their research and the information that they get. In fact, if you didn't, my son was early earlier here, and he said, "Thank you for the History Day stuff." I think that's fantastic. That's amazing stuff that we do in our district. Because through that project, he was able to learn how to research the real way. Because I gotta tell you, if you tell a kid sometimes to research, you know what they're gonna do? They're gonna open up, they're gonna go to Wikipedia and be like, "I'm done! I did all my research!" And if you're familiar with the way that the information is from Wikipedia, it doesn't really work that well. So we want kids to be able to decipher critically the information that they get from the internet, know knowledge firsthand, and be able to research the best way they possibly can. Because they won't exist in this book and old telephone way. They exist in internet communication devices on computers and a smartphone that they keep with them twenty-four-seven. I know that everyone's heart is in the right place, and you want to protect that innocence. And I really recommend that every parent in here has that dialogue with their kids and talks about all the things that they should and should not read. That's our responsibility as parents. It's not the responsibility of a school district. And if you start burning and banning books, the only thing that you're teaching our youth is that you believe that the First Amendment doesn't count. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kira, and I live on 401 Babcock Boulevard. I've always had this saying that strict parents raise sneaky children. So when I was fifteen, I asked my mom if I could read The Handmaid's Tale. She said no, and I asked why. Because I was raised with the belief and policy that if I asked a question, I would get an honest answer, no matter what the answer might be and if I didn't like it. So she explained to me that the book includes rape scenes, torture, the degradation of women, and so on. Still, I asked to read it. So she said yes. I read it, and it scared me. I was horrified by the content, so I reread it, and I started to understand it. It preaches the dangers of censorship. In one part of the book, they burn books that they believe are too sexual for people to read. I understand the dangers of denying education, and I hope other people understand those dangers too. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nora Seguin. I live at 5847 96th Street, southeast in Delano. And I would like to point out, like, a story that has to do with this book banning. So in ninth grade, I was fourteen years old, and my AP Gov teacher told me to write a paper on law, something to do with law. And something I'm really passionate about is sexual assault laws all over the nation. And so I'm like, how am I supposed to find a reliable source for all of this? So I asked my teacher, and she goes, "Why don't you go check out a book from the library?" So I go, "Okay." And I found an autobiography by a rape victim. It was about rape, and I wrote an amazing paper just because of that. And I'm saying, if we don't have access to those materials, how are we supposed to learn about the experiences? How are we supposed to know what to do if we are ever in that experience? You can't learn that stuff from a TikTok or an article online. You just can't. You have to, like, go into the library, get a book to read, educate yourself, and I think it's inappropriate to block students from that kind of education, because it could happen to them. It could happen to them. Thank you.
Steve Rogers, 196 Raymond Avenue. First of all, I know I can't look that way. I want to say, it was great hearing a lot of the students speak up, and it took a lot of courage, so I can't say congratulations, but it was, took a lot out of that. So I commend you guys. I don't believe in the concept of burning books or banning books, freedom of speech, everything else. However, my statement is very simple. The age where this was brought up was for Battle of the Books. These were on there. These were seventh gr-- no?
That's a separate set of books that are not on this list.
Okay. The statement I look at right now is the concept of saying, right now, in my opinion, children of those ages, thirteen and under, should be protected. There are certain issues that say, I don't want my fourteen-year-old daughter, if that was last year, to read those books. I'm a dad. I want to protect my child's innocence as long as I can. The answer was, every parent has their own choices. Again, they might not agree with me, they might agree with me. But I look at every one of you on the board and simply say, would you want your twelve-year-old to read those books? Now, I can't ask that question, obviously, for it, but I'd like to put that in the back of your head, saying, there's that book there. Now, the internet is a wonderful thing. We just learned about the Chat GPTs and everything else, but we also know the horrors of it too, right? We also understand that there's things that kids shouldn't know and see. So I'm hoping, right now, in the concept of your new committee, that we'll at least look at some age-based recommendations or things that the current library and things do. Because in my opinion, maybe I'm only it by myself, but if a student wants to read things that are pornographic at best, there's a public library. There's a situation here where each and every one of you has a job. When my kids leave at seven-thirty, I'm expecting each and every one of you to protect them. I'm looking for your, again, my tax dollars are going to pay for the school funding. That's to help the curriculum. Somewhere in the system, you all broke down, or the system broke down. I'm asking every one of you up here now to do a better job. Can't change the past. And I commend all of you for standing up here and taking beating on this. Mr. Shane, appreciate you taking the books off. But all I'm asking is, right now, from both the board, the administration, and librarian, do better. Work with, work with the parents. Because again, I don't, again, from the concept of finding what's available is not necessarily what should be done. If a child wants to find out about it, great. If a kid wants to do that, great. I commend them. The young students who came up and read the books, said it made an impact in their life. I'm happy for them. I don't want to take that away. The only statement is, is that, again, it's not for every student. It's not for every family. It's not for everybody's morals and values. And from seven-thirty, right, like that's when school starts, sorry, to three o'clock, our trust is in your hands. And right now, the ability is real simple. A lot of people came up and talked last year. Your second financial aspect didn't pass. Right now, there's a lot of bad press that's going on about Delano. That's gonna affect this community. So all I'm asking right now is, first of all, again, do better. Thank you.
Leah Pittsburgher. I live at 4082 Wood Hill Drive in Loretto. I don't even know where to begin, if I'm being honest. I've never been to a school board meeting, never had a need to come to a school board meeting. I have a fourth grader and a first grader. We've lived in this community for fifteen years. We selected this community because of the quality of the education. We stayed because of the quality of the education. And this experience tonight has been heartbreaking to watch, if I'm being honest. I don't know where Clara is, or if she is still here, but that girl is amazing. I don't even, if my children, yeah. If my children grow up to be as strong, half as strong, half as courageous and half as independent as that young woman, I, that is going to be a job well done. I think that much of who she became came from her parents and their ability to ensure that she had access to the things that she needed to grow as a human being. I also think it came from the teachers in this district and how they helped raise her, how they ensured that she had access to education, quality education, and literature. The list of issues that the gentleman earlier very dramatically read off for all of us was appalling. I agree. Unfortunately, it's the world that we live in today, more than anything with the events that happened in Nashville. It's scary. We live in a really, really scary place. These are things, though, that our high schoolers, and unfortunately, probably our middle schoolers, they're exposed to that regardless of the books that are in our library. They're exposed to that because I turn on the news in the morning, and I find myself having to turn it off, perhaps, to protect my child from what they see on the news. That is a choice that I have to make as a parent to ensure that my children maybe don't see things that they're not ready to be able to process. I don't have any interest in restricting others' abilities to parent their children or to ensure that they don't have access to literature that maybe isn't in alignment with what they believe. It is one of the things that I love about this community, is that it is a melting pot, if you will, of different beliefs. It is something that I value about this community. It's part of why we live here. I also, though, expect the same rights. I expect to be able to ensure that my child, my children, have access to the things that I want them to have access to. And when you remove books from the library, while it might protect their child and it is in alignment with their beliefs, it is not in alignment with the beliefs that we hold in our family. And when you do that, you make a choice for me, and that doesn't feel equitable. And I believe that that is the job of a public school system, is to provide an equitable education. Not fair, equitable. That means that you have to protect my child and my child's rights and what I believe for my children, just as much as you have to protect the other children. That's where we enter the picture. That's where we, as parents, play a role. You don't do this alone. These teachers don't do it alone. We are their partners. What is happening here, in my opinion, is a flexing of power of a very few in our district to push their ideology on those of us whose voices are often quieter. But do not mistake me. My voice is not quiet because I agree. My voice is quiet because I trust the teachers and the educators in this district that not only educate my children, but they help raise them. And I can tell you, I've had conversations in the last week or so with some educators in this district that are alarming and have brought me to tears, because these are people who are part of my family, literally part of my family. And some of them don't want to be in our district, and it's because of things like this. That is terrifying to me. And it should be terrifying to you. Today, I am disappointed in our community, not in the school board, in our community. This is what you see on TV. This rhetoric and this ideology and this kind of puffing and the reading of the list and the flopping of the papers, that's what you see on TV, on the news. That is not, that is not Delano. That is not who we are. That is not who this district is, not at my school. That is not who we are. That is not who this district is, not at my school, not where my kids go to school. What I urge you to do is not listen to me, not listen to the other people that have come up here, but listen to the educators in the school. They're the experts. Listen to our children. Listen to the kids that have had the courage. I agree, courage beget, begets courage, sure. These kids are some of the most courageous human beings I have seen in a very long time. They are way more courageous than any of the individuals that have stood up at this podium tonight and spoken to you, way more courageous, because they're the ones being marginalized. They're the ones being cast aside, pushed aside. We pay taxes, we understand what rights we have, what rights we don't. These kids have opinions and they have a voice and they have a right. They have a right to an education that represents what they believe, just like everyone else has a right to ensure that their children don't have access to whatever it is they don't want to have, want to have access to. But don't take it away from the kids. So my request to you is not that you listen to me, like, I don't really know that much, if I'm being honest, right? I'm just a mom who wants my kid to grow up in a safe place where there are, where he has access to, uh, literature and to friends and to teachers and to an experience that keeps him safe, that he can relate to. Because the world, it is a scary frickin' place. I don't want this school to be that, too. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name is Laura. I live at two five three Franklin Avenue West here in Delano, and I wasn't planning on talking. I came with a friend tonight. But one of the things I just wanted to share is, I work as a drug and alcohol counselor at one of the best treatment centers in the world, and I work out of our youth and young adult facility for age thirteen to twenty-five. And so, uh, you know, I think we have ideas sometimes of what addicts and alcoholics look like as children, and yet, like, I go in the cafeteria and it looks just like any other high school. There are kids who, uh, have two-parent household, Christian, one-parent household, every background, because it doesn't discriminate. Addiction doesn't discriminate. And these parents call about getting their kid into treatment and they say, uh, well, I don't know if I want my thirteen-year-old to come there because he might learn things from the other kids that he's not supposed to know. And I'm telling you, these kids know more than we know. Half the time when they come in, the thirteen-year-old already knows it all. And the parent calls and says, my kid, um, just is doing this. And you get the kid on the phone, or you're doing counseling with the kid, and they know so much more than the parents ever know when they're telling us. And so I hear people saying, our job as parents is to protect our kids' innocence. I talk to a lot of these kids who have experienced the things people are saying that are awful in these books that are actually happening to kids who are getting raped, who have sexual assault from family members, who have been, uh, through awful things that you can't imagine. And I think if that's your goal as a parent, to protect your child's innocence, that's okay. But my job as a parent is to protect my kids and to teach them how to live in the world. My job isn't to protect them and their innocence to the point that they aren't able to launch when they're eighteen or when they're in a situation that I'm not able to censor. My job as a parent is to equip them with the knowledge, and I think, like some people said, critical thinking skills, so that they can do it. I have a daughter who's in second grade, who's an incredible reader, top of everything for reading. I go to the library. I've talked to the woman who was from the library here. What can she read? She's eight years old. She can read well, but what can she read? What's appropriate for her? Because she could read books, but I, it's my job to figure out what books are appropriate for her. I'm a big reader. I've passed on a love of reading to my kids, and I do think it's a really slippery slope if we start talking about taking books away because we think it's inappropriate, because there are kids who have that lived experience, and that can change their life to be able to read that and see someone else share their lived experience. Um, and there's healing in that, too. So I just, I, one of the things I just want to say is to be cautious about making blanket statements about what our job is as parents, because we get to choose what our job is. And my job is to equip my children to live in this world that the last woman just mentioned is a scary world. So I just wanted to appeal to you on that, that there is a lot of things that kids experience that you don't think they do, and these books are a great resource for them to learn how to live in our world.
My name is Melissa Ulberg. I live at fifty-one fifty Fern Drive, Loretto, and my Fitbit just beeped at me because my heart is racing so fast. I'm like, oh, did I hit ten thousand? No, I'm just nervous. Um, I did not write anything super wonderful, prepared. Um, I just have a couple points I'd like to say, um, because I feel like I have to. Censoring books undermines one of the primary functions of education, teaching students how to think for themselves. Shouldn't we trust our children to become independent thinkers? And in education, representation matters, even if it makes you uncomfortable. Um, someone pointed this out to me. I did not find it myself, but I, I hope it's legit. I trust him. But a recent report from NBC News found that over fifty percent of books being banned are centered around either an LGBTQ character or characters, characters of color. Is that a coincidence? I don't think so. And I'm, I'm wondering, and I haven't read these books. I wish I was a speed reader. I only learned about them, uh, last Friday. But I'm wondering how many people who want to ban these books have actually read them. Um, I'm also curious how many people who are opposed to these books have children who have access to the internet. Because I'd like to say I have really good kids and, you know, but they have a phone. And I do check their phone. I do have some controls on there, but they're sixteen now. They drive. They, they're exposed to things in the world that I do not have control over. And so I have to believe that I've done my best, and they're going to make their choices. And, um, just to the last woman's point, I, I'm a reader. My daughter reads a ton. And when she was little, we struggled, really, we struggled because she wasn't ready for the, the maturity and the books that her brain was ready to read. Um, so as a parent, I had to work through that and figure out what books she could read, but that was my job as a parent. Um, but I just, I'd also like to say really quickly that, um, I think you guys are doing a great job. Um, the community I moved to, moving here, I'm, I'm kind of glad my kids only have two and a half years left, because this scares me, that we have so much fear in this community, and I, I hate it. But thank you.
Good evening, board members. Uh, my name is John Worth. I live on one hundred first Street. And I think, uh, the last speaker got it right. Uh, when you get up to this podium, your heart is racing a little bit. So I'll do my best. I'm not as eloquent as some of the other speakers, uh, tonight. But I think, um, as I was sitting, listening to tonight, it is a wonderful opportunity that you have tonight to hear such a diverse perspective, group of perspectives. I think this is the wonderful, wonderful thing about Delano, about the United States, is we can all get up here and we can say what we're feeling, and there is no fear of repercussions coming back to us. Even though I may not agree with everything that's being said, it is great. It is a wonderful feeling to just hear that other perspective. And for that reason, I, I put all my trust in the school board and the school to make those right decisions, because it is very important for our students to get diverse perspectives. And I fear that when we go down that road of banning books or censoring materials, we lose those diverse perspectives. And that is a major concern to me as a parent. Some of those readings that were, uh, highlighted today, would I want my child, uh, children, I have three of them in the district, would I want my children reading those? No. But what a wonderful opportunity to have a conversation with them when they do. There are often many things that I don't want to happen to my, my children. Do I ever want them to get hurt? No. Do I want them to experience a traumatic event? No. But when those things happen, it is such a wonderful educational opportunity for me as a parent to help them understand what is going on in that event, to help them come to terms with it, and to also instill my values and morals into that situation. And I think we're losing that opportunity as a parent when we say, you can't do that. But how about, let's have that conversation. Read that book. Let's talk about it. And so I want to echo some of the sentiments tonight of, we need those materials to be in place so that some of those conversations can happen, so some of the students who may not have great parents can get some of those life lessons and teachings that their parents may not have given to them. And so I want to say, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you for the opportunity for others to speak. And I trust in your decisions and in the decisions of our teachers, who are there day in, day out. They are there for the best reasons. And they care so much for those children, love them like their own. And I want to show my support to them and the materials that they choose to use in their classrooms. So, thank you.
Hello, Brenda De Vries, thirteen thirty-seven Fox Street in Delano. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, comment, I don't think anybody that has talked today does not care about our kids. I think we all care desperately about our kids. It's figuring out what the best thing to do is. And honestly, I know it sounds very, um, it, it's very inflammatory or, or it's very dramatic to talk about book banning and book burning. And, um, I personally don't think that that's what this is about at all. This is not about banning books or freedom of speech. Um, I believe very much in freedom of speech and that no book should be banned. But making it, uh, labeling books and having them available, um, very much use the library regularly, and I've had conversations with the librarians there, and having them labeled appropriately and having them available to students that are able to digest the information is incredibly important. So I don't feel like what you're having to decide here has to do with burning books or putting them in a pile and getting rid of them so that we don't discuss some of the topics that are absolutely happening and important and are affecting all of our children. The depression, the anxiety is off the charts with kids and adults alike. I, I can't believe that every child having access to those books and reading them, for some of them, it's going to cause anxiety to go up. It's going to cause depression to go up. It would be awesome if in every home, parents were able to be involved and to help kids make those decisions. And hopefully, that is what is being created here, is a community of parental involvement. Um, I don't believe that the school district should raise my children. I don't believe that's your job. I believe your job is to do the best you can, yes, to provide, uh, info, uh, information and curriculum so that the kids can learn. You can't even give an education. A student has to earn an education. As a parent, I can't give an education. I can't give my student all the things, or my children, all of the things that I would like to give them. They have to accept them. But I can present them, and I can try to, like, uh, many people have talked about critical thinking skills. It's absolutely what it's all about, being able to dialogue through those things. And I think parents know best about what their child can handle and what their child cannot handle. And I cannot possibly, um, know and have intimate knowledge of eighty-seven hundred books that are available in the school. I, I just can't. So that's where I do count on you to say, hey, um, this, maybe some sort of a, a labeling system, some sort of a, which, which is done. There are, uh, systems out there, you know, Common Sense Media, um, Goodreads, uh, they're, they're very similar to movie cri, uh, criteria. Why is something rated R? Why is something rated G? We do that for movies. I don't think doing that for books is, um, unavailable or unacceptable or not even common. So, um, I just believe that the information, it, it's not about having to even to decide for one side or another. I think you can very much decide and, uh, help the community to see that this is an issue of maintaining parental rights and helping us to do the job that we were given to do, uh, which is to raise our children. So, thank you.
Hello, Teresa Shampo, five five two eight, forty-fourth Street Southeast. I don't have anything prepared. Um, the main thing that I wanted to say when I listened to you guys in your work session, I liked that you want, when Amy said, we need to look about ingesting the books, what's coming into our, into our books. A lot of you know that I was in education for ten years. Eight of that was in the English classroom, and then two of that was as a library media specialist in an Oakenham Penn. So I do have that as my master's degree. So I feel like I have a little credibility because I've been there. Um, when I was the media spell, specialist, I had two books that were censored. Um, one was, and a teacher was trying to ban it, and it was a book about Columbus. And she said, that's not how it happened. You need to get that book out of here. And I was young. I think I was twenty, or I was thirty, thirty-two, before I had kids. And I thought, okay, oh, my gosh, she's mad about this. I got to get it out of here. And there was no policy about that. And I started to pull it. And then I thought, well, this just doesn't feel right. Then I had a book, um, after I had my oldest, and I was on maternity leave, and my principal called me, and she said, you have a book that's been banned. And I thought, oh, God. And I remember feeling super anxious and thinking, I did my best. I contacted, you know, School Library Journal. I looked at everything to put what, the books that I needed in there. And I remember we had got this huge grant, and it was something like a hundred thousand dollars. In the year two thousand six, that's a lot of money to be able to put into your library. So I didn't, so when she told me the book was Heather Has Two Mommies, I thought, oh, I do remember that book, because of all those books that I had ordered that year, I thought, oh, this is going to cause some trouble, I think, even though it was in Oakenham Penn, and it was actually, um, Evergreen Park Elementary School in Brooklyn Center. So we had a huge diversity of students. I knew that some of my students did have mothers, two mothers, and not a mother and a father. So I thought, my, my curriculum needs to, what I have in my library has to represent my kids. And so I do remember buying that book, and I specifically, and then, um, that was challenged, and I think that was left to remain in the library. I really don't know how that happened because I was on maternity leave. But my whole point is that this really, I think it got out of hand, and I understand the outrage. Oh, I didn't realize so many people were here. I do realize the outrage. Um, oh, God. Um, I do understand, because I was like that. I taught Huck Finn. I taught The Crucible. Those were hard topics, and those were to juniors. And I remember going through, you know, and especially with Huck Finn, that was been challenged forever. And so I'm very adamant, you don't ban books, you don't censor books. However, this situation, I don't know if you guys really, I can't address, but I don't think you realize, some of these books that are in question, um, it's, it's not things like The Crucible. Um, some of those books on the list, I mean, you, I don't even know what's all on there, but I know specifically there are, there are two. And I just, I'm going to die reading this. My kids are going to die if they know I'm saying these words in public. But I just need, feel like I need to say it, because these aren't the books, the classics that we're asking to pull out because of themes. There's some excerpts, um, like from Flamer, and I know some, some kids, some students were in here and saying they identified with the book, and it really helped them. That's wonderful. I think that's good. But we're here to talk about sexual explicit language, and these are things that were, if I was a librarian, I put this in my library, I'd be mortified because it does, it's vulgar. I'm just going to read through it. On page one thirty-one, um, from Flamer, and this is a graphic novel, which means there's pictures that go along, and it's like a comic strip. I can't believe I'm reading this out loud. Um, "We're each busting a load into this bottle." And the children are sitting around there at camp, and they're holding a Mountain Dew bottle. And it says, "We're each busting a load into this bottle. If you don't cum, C-U-M, you have to drink it. Ha, ha, ha." And this is a child probably thirteen years old away at camp. That's one of the pictures. Page fourteen, "Hey, Navarro, suck any good dicks lately. Ha, ha, ha." Page fourteen. Page one twenty-one, "Ha, ha, it's true. Ha. My dick gets so hard thinking about her sometimes that I think it's going to rip right through my jeans. No, really. I've got a bad, she just hasn't realized she wants me yet." Those books are fine if you want your children to read those, but if my thirteen-year-old, you know, was reading that, I want her to hear that kind of stuff from me. And I know that it's inevitable, this is the way our society is going. But dear Lord, we have twelve-year-olds in the building, and I know, I can't adjust, but I know that you guys knew this was bad because you pulled it immediately, which I appreciate. We can't have that book coming back. We just really can't. Um, the second one, and this is really bad, "For Me, Earl and the Dying Girl." Um, this is on page sixty. "Yeah, Earl, I'm going to eat her pussy. Do you even know how to eat pussy? Um, not really. Papa Gaines never sat you down and said, son, someday you're going to have to eat the pussy. No, but did he teach me how to eat? No, but he did teach me how to eat a butthole." "No, but he did teach me how to eat a butthole." Again, 12-year-olds in our building, 12-year-olds. This isn't classic literature. This isn't Huck Finn that we're saying get rid of. This is disgusting. And if you wanna read it when you're older, again, even my junior, I mean, I know she's, she's gonna see and she's gonna hear this stuff, but, but a 12-year-old? Later in the novel, it talks about the three-step message of seduction. Well, fine, whatever, I guess that's not so bad, but the ones that above it were. This is kind of what we're talking about. These are the books. It's not this hundred list of, let's throw, you know, have a big party and throw books into a bonfire. It's these kind of books. So if you guys could develop something to find those specific books, put them in a section where only the older kids, and I don't even know, I'm sure some parents are gonna have a fit that I'm even saying this, but have it where it's not easily acceptable to our 12-year, accessible for our 12-year-olds to see them. That's what we're talking about. I'm, like I said, I have a master's degree in library media, I was an English teacher, I love books. My whole house is still full of books, the classics, and it's not about censoring those books. Because if it were, I'd be with these people, and I would say, heck, no, you don't do that. These are the books that we're talking about. So if there's a way that you can come in and find, I know it's gonna be extensive, but we shouldn't have 12-year-olds being able to read a book that says, hey, did you suck any good dicks lately? That's just horrifying to me. So I hope that, that I think there's some misunderstanding about what is being looked at as a whole and asked as a whole. Because for me, that's what I would like you guys to look at. Delano has a great reputation, and I think that that's one thing I want you guys to consider, is what do we want to be known for? We're not gonna be throwing books into a big bonfire, but we certainly have to have a way to make sure that our youngest students aren't going to be reading this kind of stuff at such young an age. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jesse. Excuse me. 6012 Fenton Avenue. I don't even know what I'm doing here. I have a kindergartner, I taught for 17 years. I've been in elementary classrooms, middle school classrooms, high school classrooms. I ran summer math programs. I worked at summer camps. I've worked with kids from kindergarten all the way through college, physical, mental disabilities, all walks of life. I just moved into the district, and I see stuff going on like this, and I'm like, I came to Delano because it was great. And so I don't feel like the school is inherently bad. You can't walk into Delano, any of the schools, and be like, oh, this school sucks, this school's terrible, these people are garbage. You can't. I don't think that there's anything inherently bad about Delano schools. But it's really, really hard. As a dad of a two-year-old and a kindergartner, having the experiences that I have, to see these types of things going on, whether it's, it's not book banning, we just want, I don't want my, I don't want kids that I've taught, I don't want, and I, as a teacher, the kids that are in my classroom are my responsibility while I'm, while they're there. Somebody brought up what's going on in school shootings, yeah. Be a teacher in a classroom and have, talk to the sixth grader and say, "Your parents dropped you off at school today. You're my responsibility." Go huddle in the corner while we wonder what's gonna happen. That's a terrible thing as a teacher. But as a parent, I know that when I drop my kid off, I hope those teachers feel the same way I did about the kids that I had in my class. I'm not guaranteed that, but I hope. And I will be part of whatever needs to be, to make sure that kids get to read, no problem with that. We have a public library, love the public library. We have a school library at all levels, fantastic. Let's figure out what needs to happen to make sure that everybody feels comfortable with what's going on. Anything I've heard tonight does not sound like we wanna burn books. It doesn't sound like we wanna ban books. It sounds like we wanna figure out if books are okay for certain age level kids. And being in school districts all over the United States, there are things that are acceptable in one place and not in another, at one age and not another age. We have to figure it out, and we have to have the community involved. The board is a huge part of a school district. The administration is a huge part, the teachers, the paras, all of the staff, all the way down to the building engineers. But you're all here for the community. Every person in the community, every single person in the community. Not one person that's loud, not one person that's quiet, everybody. There is no time to be bickering back and forth, thinking that there is some sort of political thing involved in this. Schools have no place for politics. It has to be what is best for the kids and what is best for the community at large. Sorry, I don't know what, thank you.
My name is Sean, 331 Franklin Avenue West, Delano. I don't have any prepared remarks. I'm just a dad. I got four kids in the district. I don't envy you folks on the board, you have a very difficult job. I know several of you, I know your heart's in the right place. You're doing a great job, and I think for the most part, the community supports you. So, thank you for what you do. It's not easy to run a district, so thank you to the administration. Like I said, I don't have any prepared remarks. I don't think there's anything that qualifies me to talk. I like to read, I like books. I think I read, I keep track, 65 books last year, I'm just looking, 61 books the year before, 40 books the year before. COVID was, it's been good for my reading. But again, that doesn't qualify me. I've got very close friends on both sides of this, if you wanna get into that, but I don't come from an ideological perspective, I'm not left or right or whatever. Like I said, I'm just a dad. I'm familiar with a few of these books, I've done a little bit of research, read a few If you're a teacher and you need to provide my child pornographic, patently offensive, vulgar nudity, literature about rape, murder, incest, in order to teach English, or, you're a bad teacher. Okay? You're a terrible teacher if you need that to teach my child. And I think a lot of the community feels that way. I love books. There's over 1,000 years in the corpus of English literature that you have to choose from. I love contemporary literature, modern literature. It's all great, but you don't need pornography to teach kids. If you're a school board and you're afraid, or, sorry, if your motivation is to come up with a compromise because you wanna help everybody, you know, not offend anybody and bring us all together, I admire, you know, that quality. And you can't come up with a policy that keeps pornography away from my children? Shame on you. That's on you. If you're a parent or, you know, something I appreciate about Delano is all the perspectives and diversity. We love Delano. I've lived in big cities, little cities, countryside, farms. I've lived in Europe. I appreciate so many things about Delano. But I'm sorry, trying to find my words here. If you think that in order to protect marginalized voices, you need to promote this explicit, patently offensive, vulgar, borderline obscene material, that's not true. There's plenty of literature you can draw from to teach, promote, encourage, inspire students without going into that garbage. We've only read a tiny, tiny fraction of the garbage that's in our library right now. Many of you probably know, the library catalog is digital, it's online, anybody can go. Most of these books are checked out right now. Now, I wanna applaud the students who've come forward. Great job, courageous, you guys are awesome. We might disagree about things, but keep it up, free thinking, I love it. But there are many, many, many other places to go get content, books, magazines, media, besides the Delano High School Public Library, Delano Intermediate School Library, Delano Elementary School Library. There's county libraries. If you're writing a paper about a law case, you go to a law library or a university library. You go online. Many people have talked about, well, they're gonna find it online anyway. Maybe, like, I'm, I'm not stupid. I have kids, I have teenagers, a couple of them. I know what's out there. But the fact that it exists doesn't give you license to say, well, fend for yourself. Shame on you if that's your default position. That's terrible. And I think that's, I don't wanna speak for the room, but I feel like there's a lot of sentiment in the community that, that feels that way. Like I said, I have very close friends and family on both sides of this. So, again, we trust you. You guys have a very difficult job. I don't envy what you do, but if you can't craft a policy to at least protect our kids, safety is like in your mission statement, something's not right. If you're in administration and you can't craft a policy that protects our kids, shame on you. I applaud the fact that a book came into being, or, you know, its presence in the library became known. Several people brought it to attention, it was dealt with by the administration. Now we're going, and there's gonna be this committee and this process, this protocol, and these arguments, and blah, blah, blah. I mean, call me old-fashioned, but I wanna think when I was in school, that the administration, like, they would just say, no, it's out. And the buck would not be passed, like, it would just be decided. And sure, there'd be opportunity for the democratic process and so forth, but, yeah, sorry, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Troy LaFramboise, 853 Goldenrod Court. I just had a few thoughts to share on this topic. I remember when my kids were in grade school, middle school, seeing the themes of some of the books they read seemed a little dark to me at the time for such young kids, but I never really thought much of it. But to see some of the content that we're pointing out and drawing attention to with this debate, it just blew my socks off. If anybody here, and I won't address the crowd, but if anybody here in this room is not aware of exactly what we're talking about, talk to myself, Jake, any number of people in here, and we can point you and show you exactly. It's something we can't even, we're nervous sharing with younger people outside of the school because we don't have the same exemptions that the school and library have to protect us from legal action. That's how, that's how extreme this stuff is. I don't think anybody here advocating, doing something or putting a policy together to protect our children is talking about banning or burning books. But there does need to be something in place to allow parents to exercise their right to protect their children from what they deem to be a bad influence. I don't know how else to say it. I think that's all I had to say. I don't envy you guys your job, it's gonna be tough, but I think there's plenty of people on both sides of this fence who would be willing to help out if you put this committee together. I myself would volunteer. I know there are many, many of my friends that would too as well. So, thank you.
My name is Al Sheffers. I live at 3590 Independence Road, Maple Plain. I think I'm the oldest speaker here tonight. And I hope I don't embarrass the old people tonight. I think I'm gonna speak to a lot of people here that would like to get up but aren't here tonight. I think there's a lot of people that are, after these, if they had a chance to see what some of the excerpts was of some of the books in the library, would not be very pleased with what the school is pointing out. Now, I have four children that growed right through Delano here, and they're all doing very well. And I, I think they're gonna continue doing well, at least as I see it at this point, none of them are in jail yet, so I, so some of the education did have some value. I have never been at a school board before. And I always wasn't the impression that the school board was looking at the best interest of my children. And I guess I shouldn't have had assumed that. I should have probably did, like, some of the people like Jake out here has taken the time to extensively look and read and see what is out there. And it's, it's not high-quality literature that you guys are promoting. You know, these books are what we used to refer to as crotch novels. They're not war and peace. You guys should be having books that stimulate the children, are in raising their standards. They're gonna find out these things at some point, that's fine. But I don't think I would like our school to have assigned reading that would include these books, and then expect the parents to find out about it somehow if it gets back to them. You guys should be setting some standards, and I think that it sounds like there's gonna be some review of what you have in the library, and that's good. And I don't think we should be banning bourbon books, and I know there are some schools that won't allow Huck Finn to be shown anymore because it's a racist book supposedly. I hope we're not doing any of that in this school district, taking other books out where you're, you're banning books and then talking of free speech to the point where you think it's, the parents are against free speech. I think the parents out here, and there's a lot of, aren't speaking to it tonight, they would just hold you to a standard of, let's put a quality of education out there for the students that would be in their best interest. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
My name is Stephanie Larson. I live on 72nd Street Southeast in Montrose, and I'm in the Delano School District. And I really appreciate all of your patient listening here tonight. You haven't interrupted, it takes a lot of endurance to listen to all of these viewpoints. I appreciate that we have so many different viewpoints, it's really what makes up a community. I am an avid reader, I am in the publishing industry. So I was here for the earlier part of the meeting, and what struck me as a bit surprising was, and I'll refer to what's called the ingestion process, and that is when schools choose to, what books to include in their resource, what materials they have in their library and so forth. The phrase I think I heard, correct me if I'm wrong, was, "Every book is innocent until proven guilty." That puts the onus of responsibility on the parents to choose which books their child should not view. And we do have a responsibility as parents to make that decision. But that would require the parents to read through, I think it was 8,700 books in the library. And a lot of this content is buried between the pages of these books. The media specialist, and I'm very, I very much appreciate the media specialist that spoke earlier, that responsibility is on one person, and they pull from one source. Now, it's lauded as the gold standard, it's a School Library Journal. Who's making those decisions? So yes, there is a process. It's called discernment, not censorship, not banning, because really, that is a false representation of what's happening here. This is not about banning, this is about discernment and about trust. We parents trust you, all of you, to make wise choices, to raise the standards of our kids, to have good learning material. So I would suggest to you to review your ingestion process. It's a school library journal. Who's making those decisions? So, yes, there is a process. It's called discernment, not censorship, not banning, because really that is a false representation of what's happening here. This is not about banning. This is about discernment and about trust. We parents trust you, all of you, to make wise choices, to raise the standards of our kids, to have good learning material. So, I would suggest to you to review your ingestion process so we do not waste district resources, which the proposal that I heard tonight was, for the review process is one title at a time that needs to be submitted via a long application. It has to go through 30 days in which every board member reads the entire book cover to cover. There's another couple of weeks of review after that. That's 45 days per title. Right now, we've got 20 books that are in question. Those are just 20. That would take you the entire year, and I think I heard about $3,000 that would, review process per title would cost. So, that seems to me such a waste of district resources. Wouldn't it be better to have a process in place that had far better discernment at the onset of books coming into the library, perhaps even parent input, community input? Again, I love literature. I'm an avid reader. I do not ever want to be in a dystopian universe where we start burning books, banning books, censoring books in our country, but there has to be discernment, and I thank you very much for listening.
Good evening, school board members. Mr. Shane, Mike Tormann, 588 Prairie Creek Drive. It was really nice to hear from a lot of different perspectives tonight on this specific issue. I've spoke before around concerns, not just with books. I had, just to start this piece off, I had two daughters, a fifth and sixth grader in the Battle of the Books program, and both avid readers. Anybody who knows my Olivia, she's got her nose in a book 24/7 and just loves reading and very competitive. Just go to the candy bar sales to find that out. But we had to pull her and my daughter Lily from that because there were books in there that were, in my opinion, pervasively vulgar, and some of those were addressed, and I think a lot of other families were pulled from that program. And that's unfortunate that we have content at that age, so we're talking 11 and 12-year-olds that are pretty edgy, in my opinion, for that age. And I respect that we need to have diversity of thought with these books, and I certainly wouldn't want to, I'm a Navy vet, I'm a freedom-loving American. The last thing I would ever want to see in this country was, would be a pile of books being burned, but that's not what's at stake here, and that's not the issue that I think, at least for me, that caused, I think, the kind of the uproar. It's a very few number of books that I think, in my opinion, it just seemed common sense. In fact, I didn't even think there would be a debate. You know, things like, I saw that our local library was very proactive in this issue, as was our governor, in making it available through the paper, announcing books that have been banned by some local schools that were freely available. And the first one that was highlighted and recommended to read was Gender Queer, which, in my quick review, has naked male men having gay sex, illustrations of masturbation, things like that, and I just can't imagine age-appropriate content like that that we would have accessible to kids. Most of the time, those would be behind the counter and be an opt-in kind of thing, not an opt-out. So, the opt-out strategy concerns me, Mr. Shane, because that does allow them to expose content. I don't buy into the idea that just because they can get content on the internet or on their phone, that it should be okay in the school. The school is a really sacred place, in my opinion. It's a place that our kids absolutely look up to every one of you guys, especially their teachers. They worship their teachers, especially in the elementary and intermediate school. And so, I've heard, for example, we have, we had an elementary teacher that was teaching that Thanksgiving was a day of mourning, and that, to me, is really unfortunate that we have that kind of things. And so, my perspective, as you know, I may be more of an alarmist. I don't think, you know, as I speak to some administrators and school board members, that my, my passion with this topic is much broader than just books, that I see a, an erosion of what I consider traditional American values, and it scares me. And I want our school, as we've talked about, to be a very safe place, and I think safety, in my opinion, is the school board's number-one policy, way above learning. Learning is important, but are all of our kids, and I'm talking about all of them, whether you're struggling in school, you're fat, you have gender issues, whatever your thing is in life that kids can pick on, we have to protect them, and that's what we talked about, a zero tolerance bullying policy. I absolutely support that. And so, I think for me, this is just part of a bigger picture, that we want to have a place that is, that is very safe, very neutral. Some of these topics tend to be very polarizing in our community, and I'm glad we can speak openly about it. I love that about America, and I love that about Delano. Not all schools allow people to come speak freely, and I really do appreciate that we have this opportunity to share our input. What I do hope happens is that you take this seriously, that some of this content isn't about banning kids' ability to access material that can help them in their lives. It's really about identifying what I consider pervasively vulgar, that, to me, is over the top for the age group, and most of the kids in this school are minors, and that material, as already been stated many times, this, they can go to the public library, they'd be excited to share that content with them. We don't need to have that here. Our kids look up to you guys, and they need to trust that what they're getting is the right stuff, and I just pray for our kids, because in this, they're surrounded all around. I've been thinking about our kids' exposure to life, whether it's on their phones, on TV, at movies, in other parts. They are exposed to things, but that doesn't mean we have to ramp it up here too. We can prepare our kids in other ways. So, I hope you take it seriously. I hope you look at the content, and I hope you take fair action that protects all kids. And that, for me, would be to not allow this checkout option, I'm not sure, I'm excited about. I think that just means they can go with their buddies in the corner and start looking at these naked pictures. So, I don't like that. But I hope the board will take serious action, that they have representation from all parties, kids, parents, from all different spectrums of life, and that we can come up with a plan that's amenable to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm asking, is there anybody else that would like to address the board?
My name's Les Hamilton at 5765 45th Street Southeast, Delano. We've been talking about a particular subject all night here, and that's really secondary to a more important question that each of us want to or should ask ourselves once in a while. So, in due respect to the board, I want to ask a question, but I don't want you to answer it tonight. I want you to go home and ponder it. You see, one week from this coming Sunday is a special day for several people in this room, if they're known as and believe themselves born-again believers. So, my question to you tonight, no answer required, but to each board member here, in all due respect, what would Christ Jesus do and say about this entire situation? Thank you.
Sorry, I know everyone wants to leave. I'm Wendy Doemeyer, 642 Ridgewood Lane. I really don't know what I'm going to say, and I promised my husband I wouldn't speak because, so this is going to be one of those viral moments, but my kids are all in the elementary school, one going to be, and I honestly feel like I'm living a nightmare living in this town. I moved here for this school. I moved here for this community, and now we spend every week talking about, should we leave? I was a victim of many of the things in those books. I want to be able to tell my six-year-old daughter about those things and not have it read in a book where I'm not aware of that. I want to consent to where they find it out, and maybe I won't be able to, but I never in my life thought it would be the public schools that would teach them that. My kids have had incidents where things have happened with bullying, where my daughter has wet her pants for the first time since she's a year old. The school district's test scores continue to decline. The United States IQ just declined for the first time in history because this is our focus. Explicit content, left versus right, school climate that spent how much money on this? What are we teaching our kids? What do we care about? Every day, I worry about school shootings and what they're going to find out in school. I cannot police everything they read. My son reads 40 chapters a night. I wish I could be ahead of him, but I can't. I am very fortunate that my children have had amazing teachers that I trust with everything I have, but that's not always going to be the case. And I just don't know how this is our focus. These are our resources. When programs and teachers are being taken away for these types of funding and all the fighting about book banning and censorship, I just want to protect them. If other people want their kids to read this, that's fine, but I do not want to find an opt-out situation. I want to consent. They are minors. They are young children. I don't really know what else I wanted to say, but I really don't know how we got here, and I hope someday we do get back to protecting them and caring about academic excellence and the bickering stops. And that's all I wanted to say.
I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone. I've heard some members of the board refer to some of these books as young adult literature. I don't think there's anyone here tonight that listened to some of the excerpts from these books that Teresa read or that Jake read and would classify it as young adult literature. How is that education? I don't have the courage to read some of the passages, but I did read them on my own, and I actually shared them with some men that I work with, from corporate executives down to field crews. Every single person was horrified. Horrified, as am I. And as the last speaker just said, we are all busy. Most of us are working full-time, more than 40 hours a week. We don't have time to stay ahead of our kids and books. It is impossible, and we don't know what we don't know. Never in my wildest dreams would I have suspected that there are, at least what I consider, pornographic books to be in our public school system. I don't care what age it is. I'm just curious, you know, how old do you have to be to buy a Hustler magazine or a Playboy or? Some of the stuff I heard tonight, I'm assume, would be read in these magazines. It's just shocking to me, and I understand we probably all have a different blush level, but I certainly hope that that isn't going to be what we base the decision off of, whether some of these books are going to be allowed to stay or to go. And I don't think anyone is here to talk about burning books. I've heard a lot of that tonight. But we, as parents, my job is to raise my kids, not the school, not a teacher. That is my job. With your help, you educate them. Again, nothing of what I've heard tonight, these excerpts from these books, I would consider to be educational. We talk about wanting to stimulate our children. When I read some of those excerpts, we certainly are stimulating them, but in all the wrong ways. Garbage in, garbage out. I also have been the victim of many of those situations we've heard tonight, and there's, there wasn't a book that would have saved me. I wasn't naive when I went out into this world. Someone else's experience, talking about to your kids about how to protect themselves so they aren't naive when we send them off, when we launch them into the world, but there's an age. There is an age of reason, right? There's a time and a place when we talk to our kids about sensitive material. And that really needs to be heard here tonight. Every single person in this room, every parent that has gotten up and spoken, clearly, we all love our kids, we all want to protect them, but we also need to make sure that what they're being provided at school, unbeknownst to us, is appropriate as well. The woman that brought up the corded phone, I grew up in Delano. We had a big house. My mom is here tonight, and I am so glad we had that corded phone because it protected me when I needed to be protected. And then, when I turned 18, I went off to college, and I had what I needed to make decisions that I needed to make. And so, thank you, Mom, for having a corded phone so that we couldn't have some of those maybe inappropriate or, you know, conversations that we shouldn't have been having, or plans that we wanted to make on the weekend that probably would have put us in harm's way. I understand some parents also, you know, we talk about giving our kids phones and computers. We, as parents, have the right to put parental controls on those. We, as parents, decide what age our children get those. And for all of my kids, it was at a different age. I've raised two pretty amazing adults, as far as I'm concerned, and I still have a junior here at Delano. And so, we decide what those little eyes see and read, not a teacher, not a school. And I personally consider it to be porn. I don't know how else you interpret some of those passages we read. And so, my question to the board is, much like Les Hamilton proposed, just a question for you. How is that education? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm asking, is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Seeing none. On behalf of the board, I want to thank you all for coming, sharing your thoughts with the board and your personal stories. All of this takes courage to stand up in front of a large crowd and share your thoughts on these subjects for both our adults and our students. That doesn't go unnoticed by the board.
That doesn't go unnoticed by the board. I also want to thank you for showing respect to the administration, our staff and our board members throughout tonight. We appreciate you taking the time to be here with us for the last couple hours. I'm gonna give you the opportunity to sneak out before we continue with the rest of the board meeting. Thank you.
Is it inappropriate for us to take a five-minute break?
Let me tell you, I'm taking a break.
Yeah, I may take a break.
I have to go to the bathroom.
You can call for recess whenever you want.
I'll take a motion to go into recess for five minutes. Motion by Jim. A who? Jim? Okay, who seconded? Second?
Cory.
Cory second? Jim and Cory. All those who say a yes and a no, say an aye.
Aye.
The board is in recess until 9:25.
What's the spot for exercise?
All the board members are back. It is 9:26. Moving on to administrative reports. First up, Superintendent Shane.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'll be very brief with my administrative report. Just some updates, some major highlights from the state. The universal free lunch for all students has been signed into law by the governor. I want to clarify with all of our constituents that that goes into law in action next school year. Not today, not next week, not any time through the rest of the school year. It's a law that goes into act. So people that... It's not a free lunch today or this school year. That goes into effect next school year. The House and the Senate and the governor have agreed to joint budget targets which allocate how much each budget committees can appropriate for their budget areas. The budget targets for K-12 education are set at $2.5 billion. So there's a lot of discussion though on where that goes. But that is their guidelines, the parameters in the targets. It's approximately $2.5 billion. So that's... It'll be interesting to see how that gets allocated and what way and what shape and form. And more details to follow. I just wanted to share, and you can... I'll be sharing this presentation with you as well. I updated the board last month on the actual flowchart structure of our change in our leadership structure in the district. I now attached an organizational document that actually, what I said to you verbally last month, is actually in written form of a document of each of the leadership teams and what their purpose is, their roles and their responsibilities and the memberships on each of those teams for your reference only. And that's all I have for this evening. Do you have any questions of me?
Any questions for Mr. Shane?
How's that $2.5 billion compared to like years past? Like I realize we don't know how it's allocated, but is that like a line, double, triple?
That's a lot more. Um, I'd have to go back, but I don't recall, for example, last session when it was in between the biennium and no decisions were made, it was about $9 billion total of a fund balance for the state budget. This would be close to, in my view, in my... At least in my time period, I've never seen this kind of money in that area. But I don't remember ever seeing a $17.5 billion fund balance as well.
Any other questions for Mr. Shane? All right, moving on to our principals, Ms. Thompson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'll be presenting to you this evening on behalf of the Delano Intermediate School and I will be brief. Just an update in terms of what our building site-based team has been focusing on and preparing for. Our number one focus right now is getting ready for the MCAs. So we're heading into spring break next week and then we have a couple of weeks before we dive into it. All grades in our building do math and reading. Fifth grade also does science, so we're just taking a lot of time to focus on getting ready for managing small groups and schedules and all of those things. So that's kind of our focus right now and really the whole focus of April is just making sure that we have a testing environment set up for our students so they can be successful. In terms of professional development, last month we did have our last session with Carrie Bullrath. She's been working with our staff on student-driven learning. We've really enjoyed having her come to work with our staff. Moving forward for the remainder of the year, we'll be focusing on kind of rolling out our multi-tiered systems of support and starting to look at how that will be implemented next year at the intermediate school. So that will be the focus of our two-hour late start in April. And then I just will end with a highlight of our month at the intermediate school. Last week, we participated in Give Back Week for the second year in a row. It's just a campaign organized by some teachers to raise funds for a good cause, get kids kind of excited about empathy, which is our theme for the month. So we raised money for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society and the Ronald McDonald House. Highlight of the week was the dunk tank that we did in the cafeteria on Friday. Matt came, he threw some balls. It was exciting. Teachers got dunked. I missed terribly. I've got terrible aim. But we raised over $2,000 for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Kids brought in Pop Tabs and also non-perishable food items for the Ronald McDonald House. And then just, I wanted to highlight, we had a few students who, during this event, the news came out about the Ronald McDonald House in Minneapolis being broken into and these girls came up to me the next morning, "Ms. Thompson, did you hear the Ronald McDonald House?" And they kind of launched their own campaign that night. We sent out some emails to parents and they actually raised over $700 just in one night just saying like, "Hey, this happened to these kids. We wanna raise money specifically for things were taken from their rec rooms." So "extra for the Xbox" is what they called it. So just to highlight some of the really wonderful things that our kids and our staff are doing. Andy Brown, Katie Culverner, Rebecca Omscheid take the lead on that. Comments or questions?
Any questions for Ms. Thompson?
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, high school principal, Mr. White.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's a pleasure to speak on behalf of the high school this evening. I know that back at the very beginning of the personnel agenda item, you recognized Mr. Jerry Schultz, who is retiring at the end of the year. I wanted to call that out again. He has been a very effective and successful math teacher as well as math team coach. And this number is just mind-blowing to me, so I want to reiterate that Jerry has been teaching at Delano High School since 1984, which just blows my mind. So it's just obviously super appreciative of Mr. Schultz and all the work that he's done and the service to our community. A couple more awards. Our History Day participants in eighth grade, for which there are many and too many to just identify by name, but every eighth grade History Day participant that recently attended a regional competition has moved on to the state competition, which will take place on April 22nd. And also congratulations to our boys' basketball team, who was awarded the state championship for academics by the Minnesota Basketball Coaches Association. So congratulations to them. Couple of updates from our site-based leadership team. We do have a meeting tomorrow and at that meeting, we'll be talking about our student handbook revisions. We've also been having conversations about our conference plan for next year as well as opportunities to adjust our flex learning plan. So we've been having those ongoing conversations. And primarily, our focus in site base, of course, is our site improvement plan. And a big component of that plan is obviously to assess the quality of the culture and climate within the high school. We're focusing this year on inclusion and respect, as you know. And last year, we learned a lot from our school climate survey that was conducted. In fact, we actually partnered with Mr. Brown and his CIS psychology students to revamp our survey to make it a little bit more, well, a lot more free of bias and a little simpler in its scope. And so I had a wonderful meeting with that group and we are looking forward to implementing that survey in the month of May. So thanks to Mr. Brown and his CIS psych students. So with that, I'll just stand for any questions that anyone might have about Delano High School.
Any questions for Mr. White?
I'm gonna share us a question for you or Mr. Shane. The community event, the outside company that came in, is that an update or something you will provide, Barry, or you, Matt?
Yeah, we're just in the process of reviewing the report.
Okay.
And I'll be presenting that to the board next month.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. White. Moving on to elementary principal, Ms. Schultz.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. A pleasure to speak with you on behalf of the elementary school. Quick site-based update, we are also kind of going through our mid-year review, so teams take a look at our goals and kind of give feedback on the progress. We're specifically looking right now in our PD and curriculum areas as those impact our student achievement goals the most and kind of where we are in our progress with our PD and MTSS. We are also continuing on our vision and mission work and now the next phase is to kind of add our guiding principles of what we want those kind of buzzwords to mean. A lot of vision and mission statements can be very broad, so we wanna have some tangible items of like, "This is how you will see respect. This is how you will see a welcoming community." So teams are kind of going through those things, providing different experiences for families that they would visibly be able to see. We are also going through our handbook revisions as well. And then our last late start, we had some time for some vertical team conversations, which was really good, and our site-based team was able to kind of review those conversations. It was K-1 and 2, 3 for this round. And then in May, we'll have another opportunity for our pre-K-K and then 1 and 2 and then 3 and 4. So always good to have those checks of system-wide things, gaps and strengths to review. An MTSS update, kind of as Ms. Thompson shared, we will have Ethan Schwer coming in April and then our buildings will break out as kind of a more specific look at what we can expect to work on within our buildings as we all are in slightly different phases of our MTSS rollout. So we'll do that onsite. And then we met with Nicole McEvitt, McEvay? I'm not sure how to pronounce that exactly. But she was recommended from our MTSS cohort through MDE as one of our presenters potentially for Workshop Week. So we are excited to hopefully partner with her to kick off Workshop Week with our MTSS and then possibly continue on with some late starts throughout the year. So it'll be nice to kind of have some alignment and consistency with the same goals that we're all working on. And to kind of close out with some events that we had and some that we are looking forward to, we had our family reading night last to, we had our family reading night last month. No, it's, it's still March. Yeah, at the beginning of this month. February was busy, and then March came, and it's like, oh my goodness. Yes, so at the beginning of March, we had family reading night. We had about 150 families turn out for that, which was wonderful. Our second grade music concerts, Ms. Coots and Ms. Healy, our new music teacher, did phenomenal jobs, very well-received. Kindergarten Roundup was last week, Monday, Tuesday. Cindy's kind of going through all of the information that she received, new registrations, things like that, to kind of give a new prediction of numbers for enrollment. And we also had our Tiger Fun Fair. Our pie group did a phenomenal job organizing that. I know Ms. Deppa had a big hand in organizing that as well. Thank you. Lots of community involvement there, it was wonderful. And we are looking forward to an art fair that we are having on Thursday, April 20th, where kids are going to submit work, and then that will be displayed for people to come and visit and tour. The Tiger Dash is Saturday, April 29th, and we are currently preparing for MCAs that will be April 18th, 20th, 25th, and 27th. And last, I would like to also formally congratulate Cindy Selko. She is one of a kind and will be missed greatly at DES. She was an integral part of my transition as principal, so I owe a lot to her for showing me the ropes, and we will miss her, but we are so excited for her as she retires. Any questions or comments?
Any questions for Ms. Schultz?
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, business manager, Mary Reader.
Just two quick things. In April, the district will be advertising for quotes for student transportation services. And per Minnesota State statute, the district's transportation negotiations committee will be utilizing the direct negotiation process with the provider that is selected. So that'll happen, and it'll probably be approved at either the mayor's June board meeting, hopefully. And then, as Mr. Shane stated earlier, the governor did sign a bill for the free breakfast and lunches for students for next year. We don't have any specific information yet. MDE is still trying to work all that out, but families can expect to get information before the start of school next fall.
Mary, we still need families to fill out that free or reduced lunch form going forward for other funding?
What, that, not for funding on that side of it necessarily, but they will if they want. It still helps with the compensatory, but we don't get that many people that fill that form out. But where that comes into play, if you don't qualify, direct certified for free or reduced lunch, if you need assistance for community ed programs or athletic fees, that's where that form will come into play more extensively.
Okay.
Can we order really fancy food and they'll still pay for it, do you think?
All they're do, all they're planning to do is pay, reimburse us at whatever the rate the feds would be reimbursing us at for free lunches, so.
Which is currently probably higher than what we're charging.
It is higher than what we charge.
So it will seem fancy.
It, it could be fancy.
A larger portion, perhaps.
But we'd ask for it anyway.
But if they want more, is it going to be similar to how, yeah?
Yep.
All those, "hungry boy"?
It's still only one breakfast and one lunch per day. And if they order anything extra or get a second lunch, there still will be extra costs for that as well.
Learned that the hard way.
Lady, I'll be happy.
Any other questions for Ms. Reader? All right, moving on to community ed. Matt, do you have the report?
Yeah. Eric was at a meeting that he could not get out of and had to attend, so he gave me the report to give. And there's four major areas that he wanted me to update you on. The TK summer programming, challenges regarding staffing, our student program have taken a far more positive turn since last month. We have hired a number of new staff for this coming summer that we are very excited about. The long wait list continues to decline in the program. Coordinator's goal is to get every child in for this summer. This would be, put our numbers at just shy of 300 kids in TKC for the summer. This would be our largest number of kids in our history. They're also coming up with unique ideas in regarding, in regards to staffing. Tim Lingan, who has worked in the summer for us for many years, will be designated as our FIAE summer teacher this summer. We will have groups go to Mr. Lingan for organized FIAE this summer. We are also adding other specialists that will break up the day and make that this summer to, a summer to remember for our kids. In summer brochure, coordinators are wrapping up their program planning for summer, and brochure will be sent out to print within the next couple of weeks. The brochure will, should be in the mailboxes by the end of April or early May. The digital version of the brochure will also be distributed and available online. For screening and census, our screening numbers show a decline from '21-'22. We screened 190-plus students through the end of June of 2022. We are currently looking at screening an estimated 170 students, or 170-plus students for the year. Although we have not directly correlated screening numbers to kindergarten enrollment, I believe the reduced number of students to, that go through screening is noteworthy. And last but not least, recreation and enrichment. After three-year hiatus, the Gale Woods Farm Camp will be offered again this summer. The summer fundamental tennis clinic and private tennis lessons are making a return. After a one-year break, we are planning for a robust variety of activities between youth recreation and enrichment programs this summer, 95 sections. That concludes the report to community ed.
Thank you. Next up is our student board reps.
All right, everyone. I'm going to start out with the elementary today. It's just me, Willie is in Europe, lucky him. So me and Mrs. Schultz kind of just talked about some of the things that she shared with you, about kindergarten roundup, the second grade concert, and all of the very fun and exciting things that kids had going on the month of March. I know that when we talked to kids, they were very, very energetic and excited this month, very chatty. I know they talked about how they celebrated the 100th Day of School and how they're really enjoying the things that they're learning. I know that me and Mrs. Schultz also talked about how they have a service dog that comes in for some kids, and I thought that was just incredible. I think mental health in schools is so important, especially for younger kids. Moving on to the intermediate, Ms. Thompson shared with me about students' excitement for spring break, students' participation in Give Back Week, as she discussed, and then also how students are getting prepared for MCAs. Just touching on those three students who started their own fundraiser, I had actually talked to some teachers about that when I met with some teachers, and I think everyone just thinks it's amazing, and kudos to those teachers and administration for fostering such empathetic and amazing kids who really take things into their own hands. I talked to some kids this month, and they were excited about learning about figurative language in their language arts classes. And then, as always at the intermediate school, math is such a favorite. Kids just love math. They want to talk about math all the time, which is great. Couldn't be me, but. All right, and then I met with Mr. Boyd, and we kind of talked about planning going on for next year. So we talked about how homecoming, we're going to have some changes in the high school next year, I won't be there for it, but it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. And then all of the really exciting things coming up in the next coming months. In April, we've got prom, and then they're also planning a job fair for high school students, which I think will be great for kids who are looking for summer employment options and just career ideas, and then also about graduation and senior awards, which is crazy that it's creeping up. And then also just making sure that kids are on track to graduate. Figuring out schedules is another priority at the high school right now. Kids, we're talking about at the high school, they had their concerts as well, not as exciting as the second graders, but yeah, that's kind of it for this month. It's crazy busy, but.
Any questions for our student board rep? All right, thank you. Moving on to board reports. First up is Masiko.
Yeah, I attended Masiko, I'll be incredibly brief. It was a lot of policy work that we did last month, as well as we approved a position, a nurse position that we were previously contracting through Howard Lake, through their, Howard Lake, Winston-Waverly, I can't remember which one of those goes first. Winston-Waverly. I know, you got to say it right, or. And so we approved to have our own full-time equivalent for serving the co-op, so that's going to work well. And then we had some long-term retirements as well, and because of that, Melissa put forth just a restructuring to better serve kind of some of those ancillary alternative site programs. And then we challenged her a little bit to say, is that ideally the right structure? And she went back to talk to the Supes. There was not as much appetite in terms of funding to actually do, I think, what the long-term vision should be around how they organize themselves, but we'll revisit again in the future. So she's doing a fantastic job, I can't say that enough. That was it.
Thank you. Any questions for Amy? All right, moving on. Next up, Wright Tech Center.
I'm on the Buildings and Ground Committee of Wright Tech, so this list created for their LTFM is certainly needed. So Delano, out of the eight schools, we represent about 10% of the funding. And it's, in my opinion, it's an excellent option for our trade students, so I do believe it's, it's money well-spent. Otherwise, the, the minutes are posted in the, in the document.
Sounds good. Any questions for Jim?
I have a question. Jim, is the long-term facilities, would you view that as like just maintenance? Is there any growth?
Yeah, a lot of band-aids.
Yeah, not so, not so much expansion of.
Right. Well, they, and they did add a heavy equipment class recently, and this is based on some grants from some unions and whatnot, and they're, they're always trying to add to the automotive and welding. It's really, whichever classes get the most registration, they attempt to grow, and then they get surprised when a program was, you know, 100 students and it drops to 40 for some reason, so then they're scrambling, moving around, but now it is, it's really maintaining over growth.
Just to clarify, LTFM can only be used to maintain, it can't be for growth?
Okay.
Any other questions for Jim? All right, moving on. Next up on the agenda is old business, and we have none of that, so moving on to new business. First up is to approve first read of Policy 631, Selection of Media Center Materials Policy. We were going to dialogue that in work session, I don't think we actually got to it. And so you guys received it. This is the first read, so it's not approving the policy permanently going forward. There's still a chance to make changes and so forth. And the motion to approve the policy?
So I think some of the things that I struggle, I'm struggling with is more, I just, I think I would, I don't know, I can't, I can't even attempt to articulate words anymore, but having it more be around our process of how we select materials, so that's what I'm struggling with. It feels like this policy is trying to do two things, which is how do we select materials, and then how do we reconsider materials? And I'm just questioning whether we should have them separate, I think is my initial response.
I think when we researched with, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
We researched districts, this is pretty common language. Bobby, would you concur that they usually have it in one policy, the step, the selection of materials and reconsideration of materials? That's why I'm asking tonight if we could at least have a process in place that's an addendum to the original Policy 606, because I realize that this is going to require a bit of dialogue.
So Matt, just to clarify, the procedure is included in Policy 631? But we can approve the procedure and still be drafting the policy?
Yeah, because if, by the time we get to a reconsideration of materials, we might be closing in on the policy being approved. If not, we'll have to, the procedures can be amended. So we can, we can change the procedures, it's an addendum to a policy, it doesn't have to go through a policy revision process, it's a procedure that can be amended. I'd bring it back to the board if there was substantial or substantive changes to the procedure, but if we can tweak it, we have that flexibility to do so.
Matt, I'm going to ask, where, if we were to move down the path of figuring out a better opt-in or opt-out policy, and I'm not sure which way we would go after all the discussion tonight, would that be put in this policy, or would that be a separate policy, or would that be?
We, we could, if there, if we do some work on that, it could be anything from an administrative procedure, that could be implemented, guidelines, it could be managerial, how to put that into place and inform the board that way. We could amend a current policy in place that we have, potentially 631. So there's some leeway and some flexibility there.
Any other questions for Mr. Shane?
Go ahead.
I have one more question, kind of related to Rachel's. So we heard a lot tonight about maybe working through the practice of identifying books or separating books for 9 through 12, or 7 and 8. If we were to think about that practice or process or procedure, would that be something that would be part of this policy, too?
I think we could, I think this could give us the opportunity to reflect on our current practices of accessibility, because I don't think we had a real purposeful conversation. When we transitioned into the 712 secondary building with one media center reconstructed in the center of the building, basically from a media center's perspective, we took the fifth and sixth grade books that were basically fifth and sixth grade, and they went up to the new intermediate school, and took a little bit of what came out of fourth that was of that genre, put it in the intermediate school. But we really haven't had a purposeful conversation of, is a book that was originally in 912, now seventh and eighth grade books remained? And again, I'm not, on purpose being vague, but I don't know exactly what is a seventh and eighth grade book, based on reading level, based on.
Content.
Content, whatever the case may be. But those that were considered in, at least in that category, remained, but they were combined with 912. And that might give us an opportunity to reflect on now that we're no longer a 912 building, but we have 7, 8 there, too. Do we structure organize? You know, you got to remember, though, that's moving around over 700 volumes, so I don't know how quick it will be, but it gives us an opportunity, because this issue should, we should reflect on our practices. So it doesn't necessarily have to be represented in the policy.
Yeah, I mean, realistically, like, we're going to get to the end of the school year, probably before anything's like fully rock-solid implemented anyway. So probably between now and September, some of that work can be done, right? Whether it be to separate books by age group, or to do an opt-in, opt-out, figure out what administratively can be administered. I think we, whether it has to go into this or doesn't, I guess, is a good question, but I don't think we can not address that topic. So that's my, I guess my question is, if we're quote-unquote approving tonight, what are we approving? Because I don't think, as it stands right now, some of us would approve. Like, there's got to be adjustments to it with some of this other language, so.
In the, in Policy 631?
Well, yeah, I think, like, Policy 631 may work if steps 1, 2, and 3 that are maybe not part of this policy at the moment are taken. And if they're not taken, then I, I don't know that I would approve this. So I have to figure out, like, what am I approving today if I do it?
So steps 1 and 2, you're talking about what we talked about at work session about opt-in, opt-out procedures?
Yeah, ways, ways to mitigate the short-term, you know, concerns and/or possibly even the long-term concerns, I guess, if the intent is to not remove books or as few as possible, what then are we, I don't know that just free rein is going to be tolerated by some, so it's, it's a matter of figuring out what the solutions can be so that this is effective.
What you're opting into tonight is the first read, so this doesn't make it policy at this point. There'll be a second read. If it is approved in the second read, then it becomes policy unless we require a third read.
Well, if there's.
Tonight, we're just acknowledging. We're not actually doing anything. We're acknowledging that there is a proposed policy. There's actually a lot of districts that don't even motion it, like, don't vote. They just, there's a formal acknowledgement. We've, like, it always throws me off at Masiko, because when we do that, and I always try to do a vote, and there is no vote, because you're just technically acknowledging it.
I think you're right, but on what, are you talking about on the procedure?
Yeah, procedurally, it's just we're acknowledging there's a first read of a policy.
Gotcha.
We're not saying we agree.
And that's what I wanted to make sure of, because like, in that instance, I would probably agree to move it along, knowing that between now and second read, or now and third read, whatever it may be, we, we have some things to iron out before, I think.
Yeah, that's where I'm at, too. I'm in agreement, yep.
So if the, so just, just to be clear, before you should vote, you should know everything. If there's substantive changes between tonight's first read and next month's second read, it becomes a second read requiring another to read.
Correct.
So you basically repeat.
Yep, you start over, which I think we're all okay with.
Yeah, I mean, I guess this makes tonight's vote not a vote.
Just because we're acknowledging, it's just an acknowledgement, it's not even a vote.
The other option is we can table it, right? We can put.
You can, but then that's.
Then you still have to have a first and second read.
Right.
The duration.
It's of no benefit, I guess, yeah.
And, and technically, by us tabling it, is directing our administration not to work on it.
Or really work on it before you bring it back to us.
Yeah.
I didn't work on this.
But, I mean, in theory, we're saying we don't, we're tabling it, we don't think, you know what I mean?
Well, it just means you're not taking action to approve first read.
Yeah.
And tabling means that it doesn't leave the agenda. It just is tabled, and it needs to come, it'll be back on the agenda the next time you meet.
As it is, or with potential revision?
As it is.
Okay.
Because you're taking no action.
Yeah, okay.
I might actually have way too many, like, opinions about it. So, do you, would it be better for me to almost like red, or like add my thoughts? I don't know. I don't want to...
I guess that's a question I was going to ask Pat as well, is what is your preference? Is, we're all sitting here kind of trying to digest and figure this out, and nobody's...
It's 10 o'clock.
Right. Would you rather us, it is 10 o'clock, and some of us have families, would you rather us send you our thoughts and concerns individually, and then if we end up having substantial changes, or substantive changes, we do have another meeting, although not all of ours are there, so that would be a bad time to bring it up, actually. I don't want to do that.
Well, you could highlight, right, or you could summarize the feedback you got from us in the Thursday meeting, or Thursday email.
I could.
Correct?
Yeah.
And then that brings, that brings it back to everybody. I just, I can sit here and I'm going to go line by line, because I'm being super picky about this.
Sure.
But I will say, the one thing I feel like is missing is if there is reconsideration, or this process of evaluating, and then it's final, should there be language about how a book would re-enter into our, or are we, like, is this final, and then that book will never be in our school district again? Or what is, it just seems like a little bit of a closed loop there, or not?
I asked the same question during the work session.
Oh, sorry.
Well, it's hard depending on which way it is, right? Like, if it gets left, does that mean nobody can ever challenge it again? How many times are you going to let the same book be challenged?
Right.
And conversely, if you remove it?
Yeah. So, the standard for the length of the book, if it's not removed, is a three-to-five-year period where you cannot challenge again.
No one can.
Nope. It's a book that's gone through its process. It's been vetted. Whatever the outcome is, it can't be challenged again for a three-to-five-year period.
And I guess the way, when we were listening to parents, and we're listening to our students come up and talk, and we talked about not limiting their access to books, if we're saying, nope, this book doesn't belong in our general library population, we already own the book, right? So why can we not, instead of saying the book is out, make it an opt-in? Right? The kid wants to check out this book, they need permission. Right? We already got the book.
We could make like a taboo book section?
Well, or just...
Someone brought up behind the counter.
Well, that's not...
Or give it to the... That's hard, though, because you're like isolating the people who want to go get it, like...
Yeah.
I think collecting our feedback.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not solved here.
It feels like step one, lying on the burden of a school administrator, feels very heavy. So, it's like, the initial thing is talk with a, initial meeting with school administrator. If that doesn't adequately address the needs, then formal request for reconsideration may be made. It feels like a heavy burden for one administrator to have that step one. Just my thought. I'm not saying it's right, wrong, or indifferent.
Especially since we don't have a licensed media specialist in the 7 through 12 building to act as a resource. I would agree that that's a heavy load for the building admin or you, or a teacher.
That could involve another staff member as well, to explain, you know, so we could pull in a media center specialist, or a former media center specialist with the administrator. The administrator has the right to bring in somebody else that can help clarify. And all, they're not deciding anything in this process. They're just trying to clarify, maybe meet the needs of the particular parent and the complainant.
Gotcha.
Whatever the case may be. And that's what principals do every day. You know, they meet with parents who have complaints about things. That's part of their job.
I do like that it follows the process that we've asked parents to follow for everything else, right? Start at the beginning. It does seem like a lot of work, especially with what I've got sitting here. Mr. Voight might be very busy for a little while, but...
He's got a lot of free time, anyway.
He's got no free time with graduation coming up, so.
And then I don't think it, I don't think it lives in the policy, but maybe in the process. I would like to see the criteria of age appropriateness from the building. So like, if you're going through, and we're talking about a challenge has been made on the color purple, as part of the reconsideration efforts, some reference to either this is appropriate, not for elementary, you know, or not appropriate for elementary, not appropriate for intermediate, appropriate for this grade, like, something that, because again, if you hearken back to the actual Supreme Court, the only gray area is around age appropriateness. Everything else is censorship, in my opinion.
I think that's kind of what we heard today, too, was about age appropriate from all of our parents, so. With that...
I can tell you this, just one last interject, and I know it's late. No new policy is perfect, ever. There isn't. That's why you can revisit this policy after a few reconsiderations, or whatever process and logistics that we work on through the media center. You can review the policy anytime you want, based on maybe some action research, or how we've done it. We can bring it back to the table and make sure, that's the process we do. We want to make sure we map practice with policy, or policy to practice, in this case. So, just so you know that.
Rachel, can I ask one question?
Yep.
Is this only media center content? I know there's a ton of books floating around schools, in teacher libraries, and stuff like that. Are we kind of ignoring that for now?
We would use the same procedure. The thing that's different is, if there's a class-assigned book, like in language arts or whichever, there's an immediate step right away of providing an alternative book.
Yep, for sure.
So, but if it gets to a point where this person says, well, all right, fine, that works for me. If I can, my son or daughter can use another book, great. It's not mandated. But if there is a person that says, I don't think this should be required in any class, even with an alternative, we would utilize the same procedure that we would do here would be in libraries.
Fair enough. Yep. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, Mr. Shane? All right. And again, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the first read of Policy 631, Selection of Media Center Materials. We're going to have a motion.
All motion, acknowledgment of first reading of policy.
All right, we have a motion by Amy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sue. Any further discussion on this?
I think it's acknowledged that we're all going to provide feedback to the existing policy.
All right, Sue, I really encourage you guys to provide the feedback as soon as you can, so that Matt has an opportunity to work on it, and that we can continue to move forward in this area. It's obviously important to our community.
Jim and I might need 45 days. We're very slow readers.
I wasn't going to say it out loud, but since you did.
If I'm on this committee, it's going to be $5,000 a book.
And I, what I will try to commit to, too, is there was a team that worked on this policy. I would like to bring your feedback back to the team, and that's protocol that we always do.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, approve guidelines for reconsidering resource materials. We did discuss this at LinkedIn work session. This would give Matt a procedure to start reconsidering materials pretty much right away. Do I have a motion to approve the steps for reconsidering media resources and materials?
Just to clarify, this can also be changed...
This is approving the procedure, but...
Right. This is potentially an evergreen document?
If we, so the procedure is different than the policy.
Right.
If we have substantive changes to the procedure, I can inform the board of this. I can, at the board's pleasure, bring it back for discussion and adoption of the new changes.
Okay.
Definitely can do that. I apologize, this seems to be a system failure, failure network, so I don't know if I got timed out from the city's network, or what, but I apologize.
Yeah, you're not on the internet.
Not on the internet.
I'm not on the, I'll look at that.
We remember.
That's okay.
They turn it off at a certain point.
All right, we have a motion by Jim. Do we have a second?
All second.
All right, we have a second by Ryan. Any further discussion?
I still am struggling with this. Not, I know there's been a ton of work that's been done, but I can't say it enough. I am against censorship in all forms, and this just still feels like censorship, and feels like it's going to be ripe with unintended consequences. So, by implementing this procedure, I think people will be surprised at what happens, including challenges of the Bible, and the color purple, and other books. So, anyway, that's just my opinion. But, I go with the board.
I share with the subjectiveness of it.
I go with the majority of the board, but that is my opinion, right now.
I assume as part of a 30-day kind of review, that we're less than that, 14-day, 10-day, 5-day, whatever, review of the rest of the procedure, we would probably propose changes to this as well, if we landed on something, correct?
We would have to then bring it back and go through the two, or the two-month process again. So this, once we approve this, becomes the way that Matt operates. This is not a first read.
But he just said a second ago, we could change that at the next meeting if we wanted to, and adopt that. Right? Without a two-period thing like that would go, so...
Because it's procedure, not policy.
So I think it's, I mean, it's a 30 to 45-day process, as it sits right now. Like, realistically, we better have answers before a 30 or 45-day process goes all the way through. Maybe not, I guess, but...
Rachel, do you feel like we need a special meeting to discuss this more?
Honestly, I do.
I agree.
But I feel that there's a lot of subjectiveness in this process that's going to make it hard for whoever we put on this team. I think that it's, and this is my opinion, right? I'm one voice on this board. There's a lot in here, and no matter what we do, we're not going to make everybody happy, and so our goal just has to be what is best interest for our students. And we received this, I believe, on Thursday. We've had about four days to kind of look at it and digest it, and then tonight we sat and listened to 30-some parents come up and say, or parents, students even, you know, this is really what we're looking for. And I don't know that this addresses what we heard tonight, which didn't sound like a lot of parents saying, I want to censor books and take books out. It sounded like parents coming to us saying, I just want the ability to parent, and let everybody else parent their kids.
And I disagree. I heard a lot of, I'm not talking about banning books, burning books, unless they're dirty.
That's really what you heard?
There was a lot of people that said, like, if it's profane, if it's not age appropriate. So, I don't think we can say that. I think that this procedure, as it exists, isn't going to solve that. I would like, I would rather see us not spend $3,000 of district money to implement this, and exhaust a lot of already taxed resources on this. If we can focus on the front end of the funnel, and the ingestion process, and make sure that the books that we're ingesting into our media centers are age appropriate and meet the needs of our students, I think that is better time spent than a reconsideration process. I think that the reconsideration process should live within the policy, and be a part of the patogey of the media center professionals and the educators as process, as part of their jobs.
How does that work, then? The books that are in stay in?
Well, I think, I like where Matt was going, actually, right? About, we moved both media centers together. Is there an opportunity to see how do we label, right? Like, how are the 7th and 8th grade...
Yeah, separate them.
Books tied to the kids in the 7th and 8th grade, right? Like, that's where my lens is, like, value-added, to say, because you're right, 8,700 whatever books in the library.
Need to be checked, right?
A lens there, that I would hope we would have, which books were with which age group when we merged the media centers, that it wouldn't be.
So the books that are in stay in. We wouldn't tackle that. Is that kind of what you're telling, saying?
Honestly, Corey, I'm separating my personal opinion with what I think is the right thing for the board, and I would say, I would ask our media center professionals, just like Teresa, the one media center professional said, she would get a challenge, and she would review, and figure out if the book was age appropriate or not. Like, I feel like our professionals, that's what we pay them to do.
Yeah, listen, I'm not setting you up for something. I'm just trying to understand what you're saying is all. And Ryan brought up the point in work session, if we can figure out a way to kind of like reset here, I'm in complete agreement that we work the front-end process, and make sure we know what's going in. I kind of feel like, you know, in the confusion of the last three years, maybe we kind of got a little off-track here, and it's nobody's fault, no one's to blame, it is not that sort of thing. But like, be it via labeling, whatever it is, if we could like reset this whole thing, so that we could kind of all know what's in there, and it's properly labeled for us to manage as parents, yeah, I'm all in. 100%. I'm all in.
I'm all for age-appropriate availability of books. If a book, if a publisher of a book says this book is appropriate for students that are 17 years old, I would like 17 and up to have access to that book.
Yep. Unless parents say no, and then we implement the process, Ryan?
Correct.
Yeah, the one where they can opt their kid out.
Yeah, I love that.
Right.
Not an opt-in, like some were saying. I mean, otherwise you're back to censorship, like, of materials. So first, age stratify, then give people the option to...
Opt out.
Opt out, if they don't.
But I don't see that in this process.
I agree. I think this is a great framework.
And so, that is why I have a problem with this.
It's a good starting point. I agree. It needs a little tweaking.
I think even our discussion right now tells us we haven't had enough time to process this together, and I also don't want to forget, yes, we heard a lot of commentary about concerns, and we also heard a lot of commentary from students and other parents saying availability is key for them, and how to find the right process and policy and procedure and practice for that. We only live in one part of that, which is policy and process. Practice, we have to invite the professionals who do that into this conversation. I don't, I don't want to get in the business of dictating practice in a school necessarily, but I think we need more time to process as a board together, both to give, like, legitimacy to the things that we heard tonight. We need to give that its proper time to, in discussion, and debrief what we've heard from our community tonight.
I'm hearing you'd like us to maybe move this to a special meeting and table it for right now.
It's my suggestion.
Is there consensus among the board? I actually agree with Sarah on this.
We made a motion and seconded it, and we have to vote.
We're in discussion. So, yep, we have to vote on the first motion, right? And then, no, do we do the amended motion first? We're in the discussion, so now I have to...
You just have made, the board has made a motion, somebody has seconded it, you've had discussion. Now, you have basically one choice. You can amend the first motion to continue on. You can vote to just not approve that, and with the understanding that we would come forward with something else. So, that's basically, you got three options. You can amend your first motion with whatever amendment you want, to give direction to the superintendent to change the policy, tweak the policy, go back and look at this. You can table it. I believe if you...
I don't think you can table it at this point.
I don't think you can table it if you've made a motion and seconded.
I think we have to vote this one. Have to vote this either in favor or down.
Right.
So we vote yes or no on this, and if that, then if we were to vote no on this, then we could move for...
Come back.
Ask for a special meeting, or so forth.
Yep.
Now, mind you, I am required by Policy 606 to give you a procedure of complaints. So I just want you to keep that in mind, that I'm trying to follow that policy, and it's charging the superintendent to come forward with a procedure for your approval. So we just got to make sure we do that. If somebody challenges or asks for a reconsideration of a book, we don't have the ability to do anything now. See what I mean? So in practice, so to Ryan's point of...
We haven't had it, though, for years.
Yeah, I mean, clearly you have the ability to walk in there and grab a book. There's precedent.
I did that in the absence of a procedure.
Yeah, we're still absent of a procedure.
Right.
I mean, we, I think, what I'm seeing from the board is that we want to get this right, and it's not quite right. And if giving leadership the ability to just kind of pause a potentially inflammatory situation, I don't think anybody's going to be opposed to that.
Board call.
Any further discussion?
I mean, I don't know, I don't, we heard 30 people tonight. I don't know how they'll respond to a pause.
respond to a pause. I don't. Sorry. I don't think. And we're trying to take into consideration, serious consideration, what we heard, the practices of our administrators, our processes when we think about policy and how we want policy to guide what Matt does. That is, just like we started our work session, that's a lot to think about, and it's a lot to do. So, I'm with Corey, I think a pause is never a bad idea. Pausing to consider thoughtful action that takes into account what we think, what we've heard, and what our professionals know is not, I, I don't see a problem personally with pausing to really get-
Amen to combat pauses.
You can't, the board is-
Sorry.
I also think, I mean, a pause, like, for Matt, for administration, puts a burden on them right now in this ambiguity. The procedure itself will put a burden on Matt and administration. Either way, absence of or a procedure will put to a level of ambiguity right now.
Well, know that the procedure's been put together by a team of our professionals, so we're comfortable with implementing it. Otherwise, I wouldn't bring it to you.
Right, and I think what I'm saying and what I'm hearing is that we heard feedback tonight that it might need a little bit of tweaking.
This is one where I think we wanna get it right, we wanna show that even aside from all the comments that we heard, that what we're doing is in the best interest of our students and their education. I would hate to go down a path where we start saying this book that might be valuable to a kid who's in a really bad situation gets banned because seven or 10 people there thought it was bad, based on their very subjective things that we've seen, and I know you have more to it, but we haven't seen it. And so, making that decision without knowing what are those laws that we're looking at, what is all those guidelines that you're gonna bring forth is hard, right? I wanna make sure we get this right, I wanna make sure that the kids who, who need those books that I consider hard to read still have access to them in some way, but that the parents who say, no, my kid can't read this, also have that, that ability, and I don't know that this procedure is there yet. But we do have a motion, we do have discussion, we're ready to move forward with it. What, we can do that, or we can keep discussing?
One thing I will say, though, I mean, I think part of this is this reconsidering process, right, to me, is a solid process. I think the work factor related to how we organize the media center is not in this, and the ingestion part is not in this procedure.
That's not this procedure. This procedure is about a challenge to a book. It has nothing to do with how we bring books in. That can be a whole different procedure, not this procedure.
Well, and that's, I think, the issue, is that-
We're gonna leave Matt hanging to dry when parents come and challenge a book next week.
Well, the short term is they can opt out of a book, correct? That is the short term.
They, they can't, opting out, they, I don't know if that's the correct terminology. We can put it in the system that when they attempt to check that out, it pings. Now, you gotta remember, in the high school media center, it's a self-checkout process.
Oh.
So, it's very data-invasive, because everybody will know around them, if they're around somebody, that they can't check that book out. Now, we can look at how we can change that, but that's gonna take some time. It's real simple with the other two, because they're, they gotta bring it in to the media center person.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have any further discussion? All right, moving to a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Hey, hold on, hold on, I'm, maybe I'm too late. I'm not sure what you were asking.
Are you approving this procedure?
Yeah, which did not pass.
As written, as presented this evening, are you approving this procedure?
No.
So, the vote is one, two?
Do you need a hand?
Can we do hand?
Yeah.
Do hands, please. All right, those in favor approving the procedure?
Aye.
Just do, just Jim? Those opposed? Nay.
Nay. Sorry.
Ryan, are you abstaining?
I'm abstaining, well, I seconded, so I guess I would be in favor of it. You've still got to afford it, too, right? I mean-
I suppose you don't have to.
You don't have to, just no.